As well as the views of others that we interact with as we carry out the business of the Board of Education.
We will open and authentic with one another, with each other, our staff and community.
As we work to make decisions, we will focus on issues, not personalities.
Our decisions will be student centered and based on objective facts.
We will, we will practice good listening skills to better understand our fellow Board of Education members and constituents.
Okay, I seek a motion in a second to approve the minutes from the February eighth, two thousand twenty-three Committee of the whole and the February fifteenth, two thousand, two thousand twenty-three regular board meeting. Okay, it has been properly moved a second in. Are there any corrections? Any corrections?
Have a clarification.
Okay, what's that?
The MTSS supervisor, what was the decision on that? Did they, did she accept it or?
Is that in the minutes? Is it in the minutes?
I don't know. I don't see it. I'm just asking, what happened?
The last thing that I remember personally is that Ms. Wolf said that, I mean, Ms. Galloway said that she had to go back and ask the young lady if she accepted it. It was still on hold from what I remember.
Okay.
Point of order. We're just approving the minutes, correct?
Yeah.
I don't.
It was a point, it was a point of information for me.
But it's not in the minutes.
Before I made my decision, I wanted clarification.
Point of info, uh, point of information.
Yes. What's the point?
Was the MTSS position in either of these meetings? They weren't in either of these meetings? February eighth, February fourteenth?
That's what I wanted to know. I got my answer.
We're just approving the minutes, right? At this point?
Correct. Yeah.
You can't hear me? Okay. Is everybody satisfied? Okay, so seeing none, the motion to approve the minutes from the February eighth, two thousand twenty-three Committee of the whole and the February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three regular board meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, say yes or no to approve the motion. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
Yes.
Vice President King?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
My soul President Clack?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zip. Okay, the board will now hear comments from the public. We ask that you state the reason for addressing the board and that you limit your remarks to three minutes on matters within the authority of the board and not address individuals by name. The preceding board officer shall have the right to limit the number of persons who address the board on the same subject. Please state your name and, and address first before beginning to speak. Okay, so we've got two. Are there any more speakers? I want to turn the chiefs for it. So first we're gonna go to Samaje Brown.
Good evening. My name is Samaje Brown. And did you say state your address?
Yes ma'am.
Sixty-one forty-seven Maple Ridge Drive. Flint Township. Begin, may I begin sir? Whenever you tell me to.
Sure, go ahead.
Pardon me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, board members. It's an honor to come before you. My name is Samaje Brown. I am Flint, Michigan's inaugural poet laureate. And since I was appointed poet laureate in two thousand nineteen, I have been tirelessly working in the Flint community. An advocate for poetry. I use poetry to teach literacy. And in October fourteenth of this year, the Michigan Council Teachers of English asked me to be the keynote speaker to deliver my methods of teaching, my pedagogy, which is PSL, Poetry as a Second Language, the Samajian method. There were over three hundred teachers at their centennial conference in Lansing, Michigan. And I received, if I must say, a rousing standing ovation as I also launched Black Dandelion Convergent Voice, which aids in literacy expansion, cognitive of understanding, critical thinking across seemingly disparate areas. This, these methods are now being implemented in three schools, three teachers in Flint, in the Genesee County area. A Peckham Career Academy, Greater Heights Academy, and Holmes STEM. This Saturday, Black Dandelion Convergent Voice, and I hope you have this, board members, I invite you all to the Flint Public Library, my partner, and we will be having Black Dandelion Convergent Voice. The Academy of American Poets sent this poem, I wrote, called Black Dandelion, out across the world and the United States. And students from around the country wrote to me. Those letters are on the academy website now. They all felt as though they were black dandelions, hence the convergent voice. They were white, Asian, Native American, black children, all talking about black dandelion. Black Enterprise picked it up and did an article on it. AT&T contacted me. And they've heard the poem on the webs, on my website. They wanted an excerpt in their national commercial with Tap of the Brown, and it's playing now nationally. I am running this program right now with no funding. Well, I should say funded by my husband, James Brown, M.D. We've been working in Flint for twenty years doing all types of programming. But we're coming to an end, and I need funding. And I was told to come to the Board of Education and plead. And so that's what I'm doing. This is great programming, and we are just at the beginning stages. And I hope you contact me again. I think that bell was for me, wasn't it? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown. Uh, Bruce, Mr. Jordan?
Uh, Bruce Jordan, um, five oh nine five Exchange Drive. I represent MEA, and I'm here on behalf of United Teachers of Flint. I'll keep this brief. I think I'm, my face is becoming too well-known here at this board, so I appreciate the candidness. Um, I urge all of you to take a look, a hard look at the agenda items today. I think everybody wants to do their due diligence, but I, I urge you to pass the personnel recommendations. I don't, I don't think it's prudent to stall or delay these any further. And I also want to just bring note that the superintendent, um, last meeting, I think it was the COW, right? I think is what you guys call it. At the COW, um, brought up proposal for a six-month focus. I don't know what was in it. But I do hope that what's in it moves the needle, right? So whether that's opening discussions with the teachers to talk about restoration, or building buildings, or uh, for the love of God, close some buildings, you know, reconsolidate, do something. You gotta move. We can't sit and do nothing for another two months, or three months, or four months. Time is of the essence, and it's time to act. So I encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Anyone else? Okay, moving forward. Oh, first I just want to recognize my daughter Haley, who's here from on spring break, who's here to visit us. She's in the audience. All right. Hey. So, uh, moving forward. Thank you, everyone. I will now call upon Superintendent Jones for his company.
Thank you. Thank you, Board President, and good evening to everyone. Good evening to our public. Um, I would like to start with our communique. As always, I like to start each communique with positive stories from the district. The Flint Knight Riders. You know what I'm talking about, don't you? The Flint Knight Riders ranked fifteen of thirty-nine at the Michigan District Competition held at Kettering last Friday and Saturday. This allowed the team to advance to a second round in which they took second place. This qualifies the team for state competition April seventh through the ninth. The only one member was able to attend this event was Mr. Mason Kostick. So we, we applaud our scholars eh, for that. And also, Nethercutt Elementary Nancy, uh, Nancy Vance was invited to the Pistons Wizards basketball game to cheer on Flint alums Monte Morris and Kyle Kuzma. Ms. Vance was Monte's fourth grade teacher and shared great memories of his time as a Flintstone with NBC Sports during the game. We appreciate both Monte and Kyle for their ongoing commitment to Flint, and we thank them for spotlighting one of our dedicated educators. If you have not seen, yet not seen Mrs. Vance's interview from the game, I encourage you to check out the clip posted on the district's website and social media. Today is Human Relations Day, District Relational Capacity Day at all of our buildings. This is an important day for our teachers, staff, and administrators to come together for so, some much deserved team building and bonding. Across the district, staff at each building enjoyed a day of activities, including breakfast, bowling, art therapy, karaoke, lunch, golf, and more. I want to thank our building leaders and their planning committees for making these impactful activities happen for all of our educators and staff. I know this is an important touch point for our team and helps renew our focus as we look ahead to the remainder of the year. March is Women's History Month, and I want to recognize all the incredible women who make up Flint Community Schools, including our scholars and families. Women are making a difference here in Flint, and this month is a reminder to learn and celebrate the accomplishments and contributions made by women. Just like Black History Month last month, these lessons do not start and stop this month. We will continue to learn about and celebrate women each day, both in the classroom and in our everyday lives. Please join me in celebrating, thanking the women who helped make a very, very great impact on our scholars and our school community. Let's give them a round of applause. Each year, schools across the, the state participate in standardized testing. Following spring break, we will begin administering our state standardized test. Scholars across all grade levels will participate in the areas of math, social studies, science, English, language arts, and writing. State assessments are an important aspect of our child's education. They create a snapshot of scholar development and achievement, providing our district with viable uh, information about academic progress. For our high schoolers, they will be taking the SAT. This could influence college admissions and help them reach their career goals. So we urge our families to ensure scholars are getting much rest, going to bed at night, and continuing their reading, their reading throughout this time. Spring means it is time for families to begin planning for the upcoming school year. Kindergarten enrollment for the district is being, uh, gathered and, and we are putting together, uh, meetings with our teams so that kindergarten roundup can begin. So we want our families to participate. We want our, uh, teams to go out and let folks know that uh, Flint Community Schools is gathering more scholars in our district. So we are thrilled to offer a curriculum and programming that helps our young learn, build, and grow uh, in those foundational areas in their lives. So I want to just update the community and let them know that we have been working hard with the Michigan Department of Education and our partners, uh, with our partnership agreement. At our next board meeting, we will have MDE present, uh, to give a small presentation of the partnership agreement as we are going into this partnership in April. I would be remiss to not talk about our continued work in school safety. Our team is laser focused on creating staff environments for our scholars, families, teachers, staff, and visitors. We launched a survey to gauge We launched a survey to gauge feedback on a proposed policy for our scholars. The survey was made in partnership with the Michigan State University. We have recently, as of today, on the way to the board meeting, received that information back, and will be forwarding that information to our board. And we will come back to our community at the appropriate time if the board sees fit. Last month, I was interviewed about our plans for scholar success as we look ahead to the remainder of the school year and beyond. I shared my enthusiasm for our new curriculum, our social-emotional supports and infrastructure updates, and more. Despite all of the negatives that you, you hear happening in our society today, I do see power in the work that we are doing. We have a team that is dedicated, educators that are dedicated, and truly making a difference every day in the lives of scholars. And trust me when I say that there is more to come, more improvements, opportunities, systems of support, and learning spaces. We are in a transformative state in Flint Community Schools. And I'm thankful to be a part of this journey. As always, my goal is our success, and I want everyone here to know that the future is Flint Community Schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I will now call on Mr. Jones to present action items to the board.
Okay. Good evening. I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution 1.2 Personnel Recommendations.
So moved.
Okay, it has been properly, properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve Resolution 1.2 Personnel Recommendations will be conducted by a roll-call vote. As I say your name, please say yes or no to approve this action. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
Yes.
Vice President King?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Myself, President Clack, yes. Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. Please continue, Mr. Jones.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution 11.8 Approval of FY '23 Amended, Number One General Fund Budget.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry. All right, so it's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, seeing there's no discussion, the mo, the motion to approve Resolution 11.8 Approval of Fiscal Year Amended, amended one first year, first general fund budget will be conducted by a roll-call vote. As I say your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
Yes.
Vice President King?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Yes.
Treasurer, Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Myself, President Clack, yes. Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. Please continue, Mr. Jones.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution 11.9 Auditing Services.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve Resolution 11.9 Auditing Services will be conducted by a roll-call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
Yes.
Vice President King?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Myself, President Clack, yes. Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. Please continue, Mr. Jones.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution 11.10 Custodial and Maintenance Contract.
So moved.
Support.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Trustee McIntyre?
So was this moved to the Finance Subcommittee meeting? I thought this was going to be moved to the...
Snow removal.
Sorry?
Snow removal was, was moved.
The custo, custodial maintenance contract was... Right.
I think we passed that to move it on. I think we passed it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I thought we weren't, I thought we were gonna look at all the contracts. But that's, that was just my understanding, and not just, just pass them on. Have we done our due diligence with the CSM contract?
Vice President King?
From my recollection, that when we had the, our last board meeting, we, we voted to move snow removal back to the co, Subcommittee meeting. Then we also discussed about having a conversation around looking at all contracts, but we did move CSM to the regular meeting.
So have we done due diligence, is my question?
I mean...
Because I don't believe that we have.
Mr. President, through you to Trustee McIntyre?
Sure.
Could you explain due diligence? I, I, like, what do you mean by, we talked about it last week.
Well, we had it presented to us without discussing it, and like all the contracts as discussed in the last meeting, this is just another one that's being rubber-stamped through. So I'm just asking whether or not anyone's had any discussion or consideration of it. I, I voted no, but... So that's just, that's my concern, and I will still be voting no because these are, these are contracts that we need to do deep dives on as I discussed before in the last meeting, and this is, this is one of them. So I don't, I don't under, I don't understand why we're passing this one without having a, more of a consideration.
Trustee Mc, I'm sorry. Rutherford?
Isn't this the one that was expired? And the question came up, I think, if I'm mistaken, you asked where was it? And I think Dr. Wolf said this was the last one she could find.
I believe that was the s...
The snow removal.
Is it this that? No, that's CSM.
Oh, CSM, okay, okay.
But this is the custodial maintenance contract, and is, and we've had several community members come to the microphone and asking to be community partners. We have local... Again, in my opinion, we have not done due diligence, even though there has been a, we've done everything like by the book, according to RFPs, but I don't think our RFP process is sufficient at this time to, in order to completely accommodate our community needs. And so, as I expressed last week, I really feel that we need to have the, all of the contracts go to Subcommittee meetings so that we can, because these have been rubber-stamped year after year after year. So with all due respect, do you guys know anything about the CSM contract? And what you're voting for? So I, I did not vote for it last week, and I'm not voting for it this week because I don't, I just feel it's part of that, our inefficient process that is one of the things that as a new board that we can do better on.
Okay, Trustee McNeil?
Um, when is, Mr. President, to you to Mr. Jones, when the expiration date on CSM? If you got a ballpark, the contract.
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna defer and have her come forward.
And while she's coming forth, it is my understanding that TROH will be reviewing. Usually we review these contracts, that was one of our discussion, that they look at the contracts. Are we doing that?
Are, are you speaking of the RFP contracts?
Any, on our contract, because remember that normally that would fall in, under someone else rather than the board, remember the reviewing, because the board does, remember does not have all the necessary, gathered the terms and stuff, that TROH will look at those contracts. Somewhere down the road past, we had, had that discussion.
So if, if we've, if we've had any issues with the state RFP process, or if we're not sure of how to proceed with our policy or process, we would reach out to TROH. So that, that would be something that would be a normal thing if we had error, we did not know exactly what to do with the particular contracts. However, we do follow the, the state mandate on any of our contracts that we have.
So we're talking about the RFP to process to CSM?
Trustee McIntyre?
So to clarify, when I say that there are issues with the RFP process, I, I just, I, I stated that we're doing everything according to the law and above board, but what I am expressing frustration and concern with that I hear from community members coming forward is that that process isn't clear to them. And we're not doing a good job trying to accommodate and incorporate community stakeholders that, you know, are more local. We're, we're not being inclusive in the requests that we've gotten from the community, and I would just request that we do better in our process. So yes, while we're following the, the letter of the law, and in fact, the spirit of the law, the spirit of the law is to, you know, not do things locally, not to have a democratic school board with local participation and local businesses and local partners. And that's what I'm requesting. This board has an opportunity to do, to go above and beyond the strict RFP process and to be good community partners. Like I said, we've had several men come up here, and, and there probably are women as well, but they have not come up to the community comments saying, "I have a business, you know, I want to know more about the RFP process. I want to know more about, you know, like, say, the ESSER funds," things like, it's very confusing and it's not very transparent, I think. And we, this is our opportunity, and I know that we haven't... Well, there haven't been like explicit problems, so to speak, that we haven't, you know... It, it, this has just been something that's been rubber-stamped and passed through. It's, it's, we're passing it through be, just because of a lack of, you know, understanding or, you know, a deep dive into the process, I guess, if that, if that sort of makes, makes sense. That, if I'm, I'm sorry, I'm having a, having a di, I'm having a night tonight. You'll have to excuse me, I'm, I'm, you know, having some family things. Thank you.
Okay, Vice President King, and then Secretary Perkins.
Here are my colleagues' concerns. I, I would encourage the board members, when we have our Finance Committee, the whole, have a workshop on RFP. We discussed that with Treasurer Luna, allowing Dr. Wolf, our CFO, to educate us on how the RFP process goes. And we also discussed how it'd be a committee, the whole, that our community will be able to see how the process worked. So as we go have our COW meetings for Finance, as we get educated, our community, our community will be educated as well. We talked about that last week, and also with Treasurer Luna as well. So to the point of transparency and helping our community, local partners, you know, apply for these things, I think that'd be a great thing for, you know, our Finance COW to do, but I mean, as of right now, I don't see a problem with this at the moment. But I just anticipating, you know, the RFP educational that you will provide for us. Thanks.
Okay, Secretary Perkins?
I guess I got confused on when we discussed about the contracts that, you know, you brought up last week concerning maintenance and custod, custodial work. And so would it be prudent of us to refer this one back and discuss it, do a deep dive, and get clarity, and then vote?
Okay, well, Dr. Wolf?
Okay, so I'd like to also say that all of our, first off, let me answer a couple of questions we have on the floor now. All of our RFPs are posted publicly on our website. Simply go to flintschools.org, go to the About tab. It's the very first tab, and there's a sign, it's like the fourth one down, and it says Bids/Request For Proposals/RFPs. And within there, there's always all of our RFPs that we currently have open and are available to anybody to apply. It has all of the documentation you would need. It outlines everything that a potential vendor or bidder would submit when they reply to that. In addition, there's always timeframes where if they have questions and or concerns about what is posted, my email is out there. It's the rfpsubmission@flintschools.org. Anybody can email that. You're more than welcome to ask questions. Public is welcome to email that. I monitor that email, so you'll be talking to me if you have questions about it. So, secondly, the CSM contract, this is year two. We did go out for RFP, but what I'm presenting would be year two of my RFP. We went out last year, I guess it was over a year ago, it'd be more than a fiscal year, it'd be like May timeframe. We approved in June for the RFP that went out during the '21-'22 school year, for school year '21-'22, right? Got them all backwards here now. But last year, you guys approved year one. We're currently operating in year one right now, today, from the RFP that went out prior to this fiscal year. I'm asking to continue on that, because this will be year two of that RFP. So we did do an RFP, we did put it out. We did also do the same thing we did with the snow, where you could bid on one or or for custodial and/or maintenance, or both. So we opened it up so it wasn't exclusive to somebody that could only do one of those, both those aspects of the contract.
Okay, Trustee McIntyre?
Yeah, and just to, just for, for information's sake, just to, to remind my, my current board that we were really dysfunctional around this time when we were approving these contracts, which is what I'd like to remind you of, which is why I would like it to go back to committee so that we all, the current board, have an understanding because these things weren't really... There was not, let's just say, as much due diligence last year as I would have hoped for. And so, yes, we can, you know, approve this into year two, but I, I, again, you know, respectfully, I, I just, you know, really think that we need to re-hall, revamp the system. This is our opportunity. And I'm not trying to belabor the point, but just to, to remind you that, yes, while we did approve a lot of things last year, there was a lot of duress, there was a lot of turmoil, turmoil, there was a lot of dysfunction, so that doesn't necessarily indicate that it was a good thing.
Anyone else? More discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve Resolution 11.10 Custodial Maintenance and Contract will be conducted by a roll-call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no. Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
No.
Vice President King?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
So no for me.
Trustee McIntyre?
No.
Secretary Perkins?
No.
Myself, President Clack, I say yes. So the motion fail, I mean, fails, three no, four yeses. Mr. Jones, please continue.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution 11.12 Student Transportation Busing.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Mr. Jones, since we, since last week, there's some other issues came up about our transportation busing. And we are proving this pretty much the same contract that we had previous. I am concerned that we need to make some changes to how children are picked up in our bus route, because my understanding, the bus was supposed to been there. The kids was at the bus start at 6:30, and the bus didn't get there till 8:45. So in these contracts, we got to create a better transportation way that we are picking our kids up, and I have not really looked at that contract, but it's my understanding that we're supposed to have a deep dive, and we, how we are finding transportation, and how can we make it better and safe for our children? Is there anywhere possible we can really look at that contract? To do, look at those type of things?
So I, I'll, I'll speak to the first part.
Thank you.
We, we received a call from the bus company the other day when that occurred, that they had five drivers out. We got on the phone with the principals. The principals made robo-calls and began reaching out to their families. And the bus companies had to kind of use other people, other drivers... And the bus companies had to kind of use other people, other drivers, drop off some scholars. Some schools didn't have any problem, but some schools did, a particular bus, like Bus 302 or something like that. They had problems because they did not have enough people that particular morning. Many called in sick that morning. And so we did have that scramble. I can't say that that is, I will say that that is not something that occurs on a regular basis where there's a particular bus stop where there is an hour delay or so. But this particular day, there was. And if that is the day you're referring to, I'm answering to that. But that did happen this week. However, when we talk about transportation, there is always a conversation we can have about transportation. And if there's ideas that board members want to bring to the table, we're more than willing to sit and discuss ideas as it pertains to new ways. But transportation, there's not very many companies that we have to choose from. And that doesn't mean you settle with mediocrity. However, we are willing to have a conversation as it pertains to busing. I mean, that's absolutely, to answer your question, we are.
Because my concern is that, I know during the pandemic, we had a shortage in bus drivers. And there's a lot of other opportunities I hear to have our own bus services as well, which we spoke of. And so my concern is that when a bus can't get there, I believe we have company vehicles that our attendants use to go back and check on homes and stuff. Some type of text messaging, just not robo call, texting to let that parent know, "Hey, your child, you dropped him off at 6:30 or 6:45, and they're still at the bus stop." We got to have a better way to, you know, the safety of the child is more important than saving a few dollars. So that's what I'm looking at this contract. Do we have the opportunity to expand this contract and make it better than what it is? And if we can, we can, but we done had this conversation, I believe, last year as well. And I thought that when we got ready to renew again, and I went and kind of looked at my notes at home, that we will have this conversation, some type of conversation before these contracts comes up. And we have an opportunity to dig a little deeper in it because we have new board members that get probably, if getting some complaints and calls or witnessing some things themselves. I would like to see this expanded a little bit, and not a little bit when you're talking about children's safety. And how do we pick our kids up and get them to the school safely? And because we know incident is going to happen, but we need a better plan B.
So the robo call text is, it's in motion. The company that we're using, the Schools Open robo call company, is working with our assistant to train on how to do that work. They have stated to us, though, that we have to get parent permission before we can put that out. So she's working on that now. I can give you an ETA through email so that everyone knows when the robo to text will be online. So that is something that is in play. Now, to speak to the second part of the conversation, we can discuss busing. It will cost us more to do more. I know there was a conversation about, the conversation I was asked was can we pick up scholars, have schools of choice throughout the whole district? Meaning that if there's a scholar that lives on Home Street, right, over by Pearson Road, if they decide to, that they can go to Pierce, or they can go to Freeman. And so we have had those discussions with the bus company. And the bus company did speak to us about how difficult that would be with the amount of buses that we currently have and what we are currently paying. So it would cost more, but we can have more discussions about that if the board would like. So that's the information we have on that piece.
Trustee McIntyre.
Yeah, so transportation is one of those things that it's like Superintendent Jones indicated, there's not a lot of options. It's kind of like with our auditing services. You kind of are stuck with what you get. But, that being said, I believe Trustee McNeil is right that we shouldn't, we should have a look at the contract to get what we need as a district as opposed just like a cookie cutter contract with, you know, this is, here's our standard service and this is what you get. Because what Superintendent Jones was referring to is, say, like, a family that has three or four scholars. For whatever reason, you know, you've got a couple of them going to one school and a couple of them going to another school, and they kind of all want to go to the same school, or there's transition in the middle of the year, or things like that. We should be able to meet those needs, those particular needs of our community. Or I would hope that we would be trying to do that so that we can get kids to school who want to be to school. Right, and the enrollment. And the other thing is, and I'm not sure if, well, I'm sure the rest of the board is aware of this, we don't have to do transportation. That's not something that we're required to do by state law or by anything. And if we do provide transportation, then we have to provide transportation for the private and the charter schools as well. So we have to provide transportation. I mean, so that's going to come up in the budget, and you're going to be like, why are we paying for St. John Veany? Why are we, you know, that's just the way that the state laws work. But that being said, I would never recommend that we balance our budget by not providing transportation. That's just something that school districts do, whether they're required to legally or not. But I would like to have a more comprehensive look at the terms of the contract, like Trustee McNeil said, so that it, we get what we need, what we need, what we want. And my last point, not to go on and on and on, but Superintendent Jones, are you trying to tell me that there was a day when scholars were at a bus stop for over an hour waiting for the bus?
He didn't say that.
No, they were sent home. They were told, you know, parents were told to, I can't tell you about every particular student.
I mean, did they get a robo call?
Yes.
So they didn't get, so?
That's what I stated, that.
Okay, so if my child went to the bus stop and was dropped off at the bus stop, and then the bus was going to be over an hour late, I would get a robo call? Not? I mean,
What else would?
Well, I would hope, oh my God, I would hope that I would get a call, period, from a real life person. We're talking about
Point of information.
A bus stop, yeah.
What exactly would a contract have to do with a single incident of a bus being late picking up scholars? What would a contract have to do with a particular incident? How would that affect the bus being late because of a shortage of buses? Because of, how was that relevant? How was one incident?
The only reason why I'm addressing that is because it was addressed by a previous trustee.
Okay, then I'll address it to Trustee McNeil.
I can retract.
Okay, well, I'll address it to Trustee McNeil. What would a contract have to do with a bus being late picking a scholar up? How would that, how would a contract affect that?
I wasn't even talking about the picking the kids up late.
Well, we're in discussions of, we're in discussions of contracts right now.
Updating the contracts from previous board meeting and making changes and gave an example.
It seems to me that that would be.
Point of order, point of order.
What's your point?
President Clack, I apologize. I withdraw that question. Perhaps it would be better to be discussed at a later time. So it's not, it's not Trustee McNeil's fault, please.
Well, she raised the question.
No, I raised a question about how we are supposed to been adding some changes to our contract. And then I shared this particular incident. And Superintendent Jones knows exactly what we were talking about, was making changes to the contract, how we pick, not just how we pick kids up, but extending that contract a little bit farther than what it is. That's the question that I had. Did you understand me, Mr. Jones?
That's when I talked about the schools of choice. That's what it was, that's what the, that's what you had brought to us to discuss for a change of contract. However, it will be something that, like I stated, that if the board wants to investigate that more, we have to go into more conversation that is different from what we're currently doing, and that will be, that will be a cost.
So we won't be, in other words, we're not going to amend this contract, and this contract is for another year, I believe, right?
This is a renewal.
How many?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So we can't add an MOU or anything as to.
Well, I think that we have to think about what that looks like and how that's going to affect our current start times of school, how it's going to, how we're going to get a scholar. You may have one scholar that boards a bus to go from the north side all the way to the south side, and the cost that is associated with moving that one bus. Or do we have enough buses to even do the schools of choice busing within the district? That is not something that we can just turn around. And so the current bus company that we're currently using stated that that would not be something that we can just do.
Right.
And it's going to take a lot of work. It may even take the district buying new buses, if that's something that the board wants to do. We currently want to continue our busing as we're doing it, but make it as safe as possible. That's what we currently are asking for. However, we are not opposed to conversations about the schools of choice busing within the district.
I appreciate that, Mr. Jones, and hopefully we can get back to that conversation as we talk about renovating and getting enrollment up, that when we started doing that, that we consider the transportation. And we might have to reopen that up because if we talk about enrollment, we might have to go a little bit further than that stop sign. You know what I'm saying?
Point of information. I have a question. How would not providing busing raise the amount of scholars that are coming into the district?
What do you mean?
Well, I'm sorry. Trustee McIntyre, one of you suggested that we stop the busing.
No, I know, did suggest.
Point of information.
Yes, ma'am.
Nope. No, no one did. Never. I don't know. So in point of information, you're supposed to use a point of information to clarify the conversation?
Okay, I couldn't, when you said it, it was you were going back and forth, so I didn't get a chance.
President Clack. I don't think we was talking about stopping. We were just talking about expanding. You know, like when we started moving forward, looking at this six month plan, and we talking about enrollment, that we had to look at that bus transportation. I don't like see other district come down my street when I school. So that's what him and I, we know what we're talking about, but I don't think there was any discussion to stopping the bus in the contract. It was more expanding it for future service.
Okay, just to give you some clarity. All right. Any more discussion? Trustee Rutherford.
The other day, I received a robo call at 9:15. My grandson catches the bus at 6:40. So at 9:15, I did receive a robo call to take him back to the bus stop. So, and on the coldest day of the year, the bus was an hour and 45 minutes late. My grandson is fortunate because I sit, he sits in a warm car until the bus come. So, and on that, first of all, Superintendent Jones, thank you for the notification about my other grandson, because the last I heard, they found him on the side of the road walking on 475. So now I know he's alive and he's okay. So I want to say thank you for that. But as it relates to the bus, a text would be wonderful, honestly, because you sit in the car. And to get a text that the bus will be late, you could go home. And I see the kid, you know, when you go to the bus stop, you see the kids that stand outside, and I wouldn't be against just going and letting them know the bus is not coming. Because you see the kids that get on the bus when your kids are getting on the bus. But to receive a robo call three hours later to take him back to the bus stop. And weren't testing going on this week? Or did I misread a calendar? It was last week. Okay, thank you. So for me, I didn't even know what to say to him. What do I say? What do I say to him? What do we say? What do you say? Help me.
About?
A bus never show, you get a robo call three hours later to send your child back out to the bus stop. Oh, they gonna come pick him up?
First, you shouldn't have got a robo call that late.
I promise I did. Okay.
All right. That's number one, because these conversations started early in the morning. And if you're talking about
I'll send you a screenshot so you can see it.
So I would like to have that information.
Okay.
Because I was, it was confirmed through principals that those calls went out at a reasonable time. And it was early when I was on the phone because I handled the whole situation. So for you to receive it at 9:15 is unacceptable.
And we're talking about yesterday, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, okay. I'm done.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Henderson, how long is the contract? How long is this, the busing contract? This is year two?
Year two, oh, okay.
President? Before we, can you hear me? Sorry. Before we go forward, I want to make sure that item 11.10, I know that this body voted it down, but I know my colleague talked about sending back the finance and operations, and we didn't do that. So I think we should vote on a motion to reconsider the last item, because my understanding is we voted it down completely and it didn't go back to finance. Is that right?
Yes, I think that would be, that would be correct.
And I can't make that motion because I was on the losing side of the vote, so I would love for my colleagues to maybe make a motion to reconsider it.
Send it back.
Send it back, yeah.
I'll make the motion, send it back to committee.
Support. Support.
Okay.
Wait a minute, we have to reconsider, we have to take a vote.
We're already in a motion.
Yes, we are still.
Yeah, sorry.
So, is there any more discussion on the motion 11.12, Student Transportation?
11.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve Resolution 11.12, Student Transportation and Busing will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Secretary Perkins?
No.
Trustee McIntyre?
No.
Trustee McNeil?
I'm gonna say no for right now.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
No.
Vice President King?
Yes.
My associate, President Clack, yes?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
We voted down CSM, which is our custodial. We just voted down transportation. So I would, I would, my colleague Treasurer Luna, I would ask my other colleagues to reconsider it, put it back to committee. Just make sure we do that. And if those that want to come to committee join that, or we just have finance committee, the whole, to discuss these things, because for me, the custodial, you need custodial. You need transportation. So I just, I encourage my colleagues to make sure we reconsider and make sure it goes back to finance subcommittee. If Mr. Luna, if Treasurer Luna want to call Finance Cal, so we can talk about these things like ASAP. Because these are services that our scholars need, our district employees need every day. I can only see people coming throwing trash inside the auditorium where we have meetings because we don't have trash services. So I would just encourage my colleagues to make sure we reconsider it back to subcommittee or committee, the whole, because these are services that we need.
Agreed. Trustee McIntyre, I mean, McNeil, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We know that these contracts is not expiring tomorrow or the next day, and I hear exactly what you're saying. I do think that we could do a motion to reconsider, a reconsideration motion. And that is to, because we're in the same meeting, to move these to a committee where the board as a whole, all seven members can sit down and have these discussions. And I do recommend, you know, we can look at it during that motion if it pleases the board.
Support.
Okay.
I just wanted to say something before you make a motion.
Oh, okay, yeah, because I was just, I didn't make a motion. I was just suggest.
I'm next, I wanted to say something.
I'm sorry.
So, of course, these are vital services that we need. No one's saying otherwise, but this is the same old chicken and egg but this is the same old chicken and egg argument that we've been having for years, even before I was on the board, about how we've gotta do this right away, because otherwise there's gonna be trash thrown in the auditorium and we're not gonna have busing. This is how these things keep getting rubber stamped and approved without due diligence over and over and over, year after year. So what I, all I'm requesting is that we restruct, reconstruct the way that we're, we're doing these things, so that we do the due diligence. Now, if, I would be open to reconsidering and having them come before a committee of the whole meeting, or even a finance committee meeting, but, but for two things. I don't get notifications of the meetings and the meetings aren't held at a, at, often the meetings are held during the day when I can't come. So if the meetings are held at a time that we can all be there and, and all have input and we all get notifications of the meeting.
Point of information. There were two people on this board that approved this contract last year, correct?
I don't remember who approved. Oh, oh, wait, 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 oh, wait, you're saying.
Dr. Wolf just said that this, this is year two. This is year two of this contract, so last year this contract was approved by a board, correct? Yes or no? So the two board members, the senior board members, are you in a different headspace or something now than you were last year? Because you both voted no, no this year on the contract, did you voted last year to approve?
So, point of information.
Yes ma'am.
I did not vote yes on this contract last year.
Okay.
President Clack. So no, I'm not in a different headspace. I, as I've stated, we had a very dysfunctional board that was not operating at its best last year, if you recall.
I do recall.
And so what I'm requesting is that we.
I also recall that the students.
I'm speaking, I have the floor.
You're right.
So what I'm requesting is that we do better than the board did last year. And that we look at these con, I'm tired of having contracts come before us without seeing them, without having the wrong dates on them, without all the information, with not having enough time. Last week, we had over two hundred and forty pages thrown at us at the last minute. And for me, a couple of days is the last minute, because I do have a full-time job, this is not my job. So I'm requesting that we have meetings that I can come to, that I'm notified about, and that we can do the work. That's, that's, that's all I'm requesting.
Vice President King, then, no, then trustee McNeil, then.
I mean, this is your job now, right now, though.
Uh, Mr. President?
I'm sorry?
Mr. President?
Vice President King.
I have the floor, okay. So, understanding that last year, I wasn't on the board last year, I can't, you know, make up for what happened last year, I don't know. I know what happened, but, I mean, that's not, I'm gonna say personally, not my fault, but however, I would encourage this board, next week, we willing to meet quickly as possible to talk about this, because we can transfer something back to committee and members probably won't be able to respond right in time and we can't get a quorum, we can't get a quorum, we still stuck at the same spot. So I would encourage, I would simply encourage treasurer Luna that you reach out to our assistants to do a poll by end of Friday, and end of business day Friday, we respond to, to make sure that we are scheduling a finance committee, committee of whole. Because we need to, just talking about work, deep dive, do that, all four. Let's schedule, put a date on it to make sure we doing our due diligence. Because we can talk about it, however, we're not doing that.
Trustee, wait a minute, treasurer Luna. Go ahead.
Thank you. We got to start doing things in decent in order. Now, the book, with the vote failed. Now here we are saying, okay, we are willing to do a motion to reconsider these votes and moving back to the board as a whole, where all can participate ASAP before March the thirty, at least before March the thirty. We should move this stuff and have a meeting of the mind with the whole board. I would say after five o'clock, four thirty to five o'clock, make it a day where, um, send it out, where we all can participate in it. So we won't have these discussion. Once a vote is down, which it was, forty-three, then trustee Dillon made a very honorable request that we reconsider it. And I think we all can say we can reconsider this, but we got to have this done before March the thirty. We don't wanna spend the rest of the night on this. This is simple, it was voted down, let's go back and see what it is, that the board can discuss among each other and not tie up the public time and, and let's just move on. So at this point, after we get the second round of speaking, let's move forward with a motion.
Treasurer Luna?
Yeah. So I sent a poll, well, not, not me. Mrs. Beard sent out a poll last week to the entire board, asking for a cow meeting. I got some responses back, but I don't, I'm gonna call it for next Wednesday at five thirty. But that poll, that email went out last week for the specific topic. I had a different idea for the agenda, so now I had to assume if someone makes a motion to reconsider, we just put eleven point ten and eleven point twelve on that, so we can get it approved, so we have more time to go over it. But I can't make that motion, cause I was on the losing side of the vote.
Superintendent Jones?
Um, yes, I, I heard one of our board members say all seven. For a year, things have been on hold in this district, because we were not able to ever get that.
Thank you.
I am asking that when you do what you're gonna do as a board, that this doesn't hold for the next couple of months, or, or it holds until we can actually get all seven. I would love to have all seven, but I don't want the work to continue to get tabled or voted down. And I think that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, trustee McIntyre, but when you talk about the due diligence, you're talking about the actual board looking and seeing, looking into the contracts. Because our due diligence is done.
Yes.
I wanna be very clear about that. We, we've done our, our work of this, but I think trustee McIntyre is saying, the board being able to look into the contracts and determine how you want to move forward as a board. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, cause we don't wanna take that from the administration. You did due diligence. Now the board have to do due diligence and we all wants to be on, kinda on the same page. So are we ready to move that motion to reconsider?
Secretary Perkins, you have a hand raise?
I just wanted to say that I really believe right now that all seven of us wanna move forward.
Yeah.
And not keep belaboring the issue or the time. So I would like to make a motion that we do a reconsideration and move it back to the finance meeting, both eleven ten and eleven twelve. Yes. And, and this, you know, go on, that's, that's my motion.
Point of information.
What's your point?
A motion now, would this be considered a friendly amendment? Or it's not really friendly?
We're not in a motion.
I thought we were in a motion for eleven point twelve.
No, cause it failed.
We just voted, it failed.
Okay, so now we're gonna, it's a new motion to. Okay.
Ten and twelve.
Thank you.
So, the motion is from Ms. Perkins, trustee Perkins, that we reconsider the motion.
Excuse me.
If that's what she said?
No, she needs to say what she's saying.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, I'm asking that we reconsider eleven ten and eleven twelve for reconsideration to the finance committee. That's my motion.
To my colleague, point of information, would that be a scheduled cow next week?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes, I'm sorry. And that's Wednesday, can you say the date? Wednesday?
Wednesday, five thirty.
Okay. March twenty-second. Support.
Okay. Is there any discussion on that?
I just got a question.
Trustee Ruff?
With the twelve, with the eleven point ten that was voted no, correct? And we have yet to vote, did we vote on the busing, when we vote on the busing, right?
You voted no on both of those.
Voted no on both, right. So my question to that, can they be put together, will we send them back? Okay, that's what I just, I just want a clarification on that, thank you. I guess point of information. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, so seeing no further discussion, the motion to move eleven ten and eleven twelve back to.
Wouldn't be back, it'd be to a finance cow meeting.
To a finance, okay, move it to a finance cow meeting. Will be, will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. But secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Yes.
President, vice president King?
Yes.
Trustee Ruff?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
My associate, President Clack? Yes. Motion passes seven zero. That just scared the life out of me. Yes, please continue, Mr. Jones.
All right, in your packet are the finance and operations reports, they are twelve point nine, twelve ten, and twelve eleven. Does any board members have any questions?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, trustee Ruff?
I, I, I don't.
Of course I do. My question is on that, is regards what I asked Dr. Wolf about up to date total. And my reason for, and, and I, is that possible? Cause I think she made, the statement was, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Wolf, that it's not like your regular account. I think that's what I heard you say to me.
Laura said that.
Dr. Wolf? Oh, okay. I think the fund balance, I think that's what I had asked about.
Okay. Not something we can do every day.
I didn't say, okay, I would like, okay, thank you for that clarification. And I may have misspoke, but I, but I was looking at month in, like every thirty days. And my reason for that is because of my background at Genesis P H O, I dealt with a thirty-six million dollar budget monthly, and I had to be able to tell the, my, my superiors what was what whenever they asked me.
So if you read your balance sheet, it should answer all your questions.
Well, the question.
That's what a balance sheet is.
Okay.
And that's in there. And it tells you your balance and your checking account, it tells you.
We're talking about what you had on the screen, okay?
Which is completely different than what you're asking for.
No, 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 but that's what we were talking about. I think if, if, let's, let's take a pause. I just want you to hear me out, okay? What you had on the screen, your question was, how would you all like to receive this? Because the balance I looked at was from June thirtieth of two, of twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-three.
No, at the top, you said this was from June thirtieth, the end of the fiscal year of twenty twenty-two. And you gave an estimate at the bottom, what you estimated, estimated to be June thirtieth of twenty twenty-three.
Yep.
Okay, so my question then, am I irritating you?
No. No.
You know what? No further questions. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Treasurer Luna?
Yeah, I would just really encourage my colleagues that, to work through you when it comes to these kinds of questions in advance in meetings, because we can, we can put these things on the fine op committee's agenda, or we can have a cow like we've talked about last week. But I, I have to tell you, when I've asked a question of the administration when it comes to finance, it's been answered sufficiently and it's answered timely. I, I have no issue with getting what I want answered. And I would, if I can help make that process easier, I would work with you, then let's do that, but I just, I, I haven't had any issues when I asked a question. And if there's a delay, I'm told, hey, I'm working on this, but I will work, I will work to get you that question answered the best I can, as, you know, in a timely manner.
Vice President King?
I would say that, to my point last week, that I think our board deserves and needs a time to give Dr. Wolf to go over finance and to understand her language and, and see what finances is, we have a conversation with finance, so to treasurer Luna, well, well, we had a plan for next Wednesday to allow for financial overview and we could talk about finances, ask our questions, she can explain some processes, and that one meeting a continuation. So I think this is a good point, that our board needs to have a conversation with finances to understand the language of our CFO, our district, nor our finances are, so, thank you.
Trustee McNeil?
When you say our board needs to have this ideology of finance, you can consume that the board, all, the whole board members don't have it, because they asking a question. But when it comes to understanding the budget, I have an MPA and I did general moles, I had everything doing that, that's not the issue. I think that what we have to do, you guys did one oh one through one oh nine, then they have a, M A S B has a budget, a training and finance budget. It is not the administration's job to train the board. They, we, she works from nine to four, and their, their team work from nine to four to five or whatever, and that's, that's their working hours. We cannot infringe on that time between nine and four to five that they get off. If we need training, that's what the M A S B training is for. I have taken it, the budget, the finance, I have a degree in accounting, public administration, public accounting. So I don't think that's where we at right now, is pulling the administration from their duties to train the board. The board has a duty and responsibility to go to M A S B and take those training. I can hear what my colleague is asking, she's asking a question, there's something that she need clarity on and wanted to do, is get a thirty day, every thirty days, just like you get a bank statement, and it's in your, if you look in your bylaws, in your policy, in your board, it will state all the things that the treasury needs and would like to have, and it's item by items, that the treasurer should have. If we had those items, Dr. Wolf, maybe that would help, because I think it's in your finance part, over in treasury, what is responsibility of the treasury. So that's where I'm at on that situation, I think we all pretty much call it a red zone here, and we got basic accounting and finance. It was a question asked, but if you look at your policy in your board, it'll state those items, the check register, the deposit slip, who signs off of, that is in your board. And there was a genuine question she had, because if we got those, then we were having. We just never had nobody to present those, has nothing to do with Dr. Wolf or this administration, is a good question, but it's nothing that you asking outside of the policy in your board book.
Vice President King?
Mr. President, to, to my colleague trustee Ruff, I, I was not commenting on her question, I was commenting on the overview of finances. So to my knowledge, M A S B does not know our budgeting, what we budget as, everything that we budget for. They give you training on what questions to ask, what, what to look for. However, as we all know that, we, we all talk about finances, I wanna be able to understand our CFO when, so just for example, last week, we received that function code overview of the budget. The, but, let me find it, one second, maybe I don't have it at, at the moment. But, so, Dr. Wolf explained, yes, we received that. So Dr. Wolf also explained us how to read a check register. I am new, I don't know everything, so she, I mean, in the meeting with treasurer Luna and I, she explained us how to read a check register, something like that, that's pertinent information to us to understand finances as a whole, as we go into budgeting season. I'm encouraging my colleagues to, let's have a conversation as a whole with our finance director, so we can understand what budget, with simple things that we have questions about, RFP, budgeting, simple, we got contracts on there now, it's just a simple question that we're having, we can have a conversation with our CFO outside of, not outside, I'm sorry, in a committee of the whole meeting, to have, that's somewhat similar as a workshop. That's gaining information from the team that we, we select. We have a team, we have administrative team, she has the information, she's our CFO, allow her to help us understand, for me, me, to understand how to read a check register, or understand RFP process, or how to do the bids. I, I wanna know that, so I can be a better informed board member. That's what I'm asking for our CFO and allow our board members to gain that knowledge. That simple knowledge will help us even propel, ask better questions, ask, and these questions for me. So that's what I'm saying, I'm not, I, I don't know nothing about M A S B knowing Flint Community Schools budget and what theirs, I, I know our CFO does, and I just wanna listen to her, so she can have, inform me about what things are. But that's me, that's all I have to comment, Mr. President.
And trustee King, you're correct, and if I misspoke, and I apologize, because when I was sitting in your seat, I had to do the same thing. I went, I sit in on RFP. You go, when they doing their RFP, I go sit in on their RFP, I watch them do their RFP. You have the opportunity to go sit in and do that. But if one board member feel like they need that training, go ahead, but don't put all us in one box and say. But if one board member feel like they need that training, go ahead, but don't put all this in one box and say, we don't know and we need this here. That's the only thing I'm saying, if Mr. King thinks he need that, then he have to do what he have to do to get it. When I want to see what the R F P process look like, I went and I sat in through the R F P process and got an understanding how that process work. And the administration had no problem with that. I'm done with this subject.
Okay, please continue, Mr. Jones.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution twenty-one point one for expulsion of scholar.
So move. Support.
It has been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve Resolution twenty-one point one four, expulsion of student, will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I say your name, please say yes or no. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee McNeil?
Yes.
Vice President King?
Yes.
Trustee Rufford?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Myself, President Clack, yes, the vote passes seven, seven zero, please continue, Mr. Jones.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution twenty-one point one five, expulsion of student.
Support.
So move.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve Resolution eleven point, I mean, I'm sorry, two, twenty-one point one five, expulsion of student, will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I say your name, please say yes or no. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre?
Yes.
Trustee, trustee McNeil?
Yes.
Vice President King?
Yes.
Trustee Rufford?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Myself, President Clack, yes, the motion passes seven zero, please continue, Mr. Jones.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve item twenty-one point one six, superintendent's proposed six-month focus.
So move.
Support.
Okay, it has been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Trustee Rufford?
Can you all go to section three, section four, the last bullet?
Section four, last bullet?
The last bullet that says note. Let me know when you guys read it.
Okay.
Did we agree to demolish Central? That's in there?
Treasurer Luna?
Yeah, so I, I clarified this question with Mr. Jones last week. The way I read it is, it's an opportunity, but I think this board's been clear about trying to see if we can explore how to make that a high school. And I think we talked about maybe doing a hybrid approach, but we only voted to demolish Washington, or tried to put a bid out for Washington and not Central. So I, I don't see any issue with the language, but maybe you could clarify for us?
Can I?
Sure. Trustee McNeil?
The reason Central is on that because it's also in your, in your strategic plan. And with the previous board member, we was talking about demolishing Central, but what we wanted to have was an open bid for, for everybody, especially the minority business as well. And that was questioned how, how the, that bid process went. So, and we're bringing it back because that's part of your strategic plan, that's in the, in some of the items in this six-month plan. I don't think this board had that opportunity, as you guys can remember, that it was voted down, the, not so much the demolishing it was the concern how the R F P, if there was one, was process was done. That's what was the big commotion was, and because there was question about that process. And so he's bringing it back, and we had said that there was enough money to tear down both of them. Because in your strategic plan, in this six-month plan, that we have already approved that Central, that poverty would be a new school, that's in the plan. But we have plenty of opportunity to address that and move it. And I let Mr. Jones explain more, but that is what my understanding, that we are moving forward in this plan. And that would include we add Washington to it.
I wasn't finished. My, my question is, I know we approved the demolishing of Washington. I'm not comfortable with this being in here because this board did not approve to demolish Central. So my fear is, you, we approved this, it'll be interpreted as tearing down Central, and I'm not agreeing to that. Because we haven't discussed it. So my concern is, it shouldn't even be in here, because we didn't discuss it.
Mr. Jones? Yes, so there is several items in this document that is not approved by the board. These, everything that come, has, that's in the document is still going to have to come to the board for approval. So I put this in here because this has been a discussion from the board. And just like I stated about a possible closing, it's not approved by the board. Nothing can go forward that is going to cost this district money. Nothing's going to go forward without coming back to this table for approval. So if you approve this, that doesn't mean that anything in here is going to actually be done with, that needs to be approved unless it comes through this board for approval. So Central, along with Washington, are, you know, are still items that, are items that the board has discussed. So it, we can take it out of here if the board decides that you want to take that out of here. But I, I raised the point as a note to the board, as a note, if this is something that you're considering, because it's been conversation, it is something that we can do. That, that didn't say in there that we're going to do it because you approved this.
One second.
I can finish?
Okay.
It could be interpreted such, and a lot of things I have found, well, it base, it's based on your interpretation. So if it's not on there, then there won't be any type of misinterpretation. So I would just ask, so if, if that's the case with all of this, why are we approving it? Why we just can't accept it? Just making it accepted that this is what you're going to focus on, instead of approving it? Because approval with this board go a long way. So we accept it as this is what you're going to work on, or are we approving what's in this document? I just have an issue seeing Flint Central along with Washington, because we voted on Washington and not Washington and Flint Central. That's my concern. Because it's in the document.
Okay. While I think this is a pretty good plan, you know, moving forward, I would like to make one amendment or one addition to the plan, to the focus. And I think everyone knows where I'm coming from when I'm about to say, I would like to see our early childhood back into the system of running to capacity, and that added on to this six-month focus.
Excuse me, I didn't hear you.
The G I S D program.
Yes, we, yes, I would like our early childhood programs back running to capacity, added to the six-month, I would like to make that amendment. Yes, ma'am.
I think if we make that, we also have to make sure that we have the, the staff in the capacity to run that, the G I S D program. And that depends on a lot of getting these renovations, getting these schools up and running. So I can kind of like support that, but based after, we could, after much research is done. The last research that was done, that this district was not financially able, nor had the staff in it to run that G I S D. But that is something that's been on the table for a while. I would look at it with, just say, hey, if we can get this done during this six-month, meeting these goals that's in your strategic plan, because I believe it might be in there, that we look at doing that as well. Because that's what it's always been, we wanted the G I S D, but we had to have the capacity to run the G I S D program. And from the last research we did, and we did meet with Dr. Rice on that, and he walked us through that, why we, we couldn't, we financially, we couldn't handle that burden, we would have to have G I S D to run it. But I am one hundred percent with you, because we kind of want this, but we just got to work on that really, really hard. And that depends on us hitting the boots, boots on the ground and getting this six-month, staying focused for six months, because that is the meat of this district, is in this six-month plan. And we are already six months behind. This thing been approved ever since, what, October sometime, I believe, that your teacher plan, and we have not moved forward on it. Everybody done got what they want but the kids.
Secretary Perkins?
I also would like to know how we fit the public speakers in that came up here en masse to talk about the programs that they had that would benefit our, our district. And the community partnership with the speakers that all came up, and I haven't heard anything more about that. And I'd like to know if that fits into the six-month plan at all.
Community partnership agreement.
Okay. All right, so.
That's true.
I think that this conversation started with trustee's Rufford's note. And so with that in, if the board doesn't want the Central in, we can, we can take that out of the note, that's number one. Number two, early childhood is in three spaces. You have G S R P, Great Start Readiness Program, which is our pre-K program, okay? We have that program, that is Flint's Community Schools program that we're running. Then you have Head Start and Early Head Start, which are both in perpetuity, which means that it's not open for you to get back. It's ran by the I S D that the feds decided a while back, there was, there was some issues that happened with Head Start years ago. G Card had the area, now G I S D for Head Start and Early Head Start has Flint, Beecher, and Carmen Ainsworth. Carmen Ainsworth, back when this was up and open, had an opportunity to have a particular piece of it. But it's in perpetuity, means that we can go and talk and say we want this, but the federal government will have to determine if they are going to bring it out of perpetuity to allow us to have it. I am not against us having the early childhood, but we, we have to understand where it is currently. So if we're going to.
Point of information to President Clack, is this what you're asking for?
Yes.
That what he's suggesting, what Superintendent Jones is suggesting right now, that we ask or put pressure on the federal government to get our program back? Because I think back when Carmen Ainsworth, we also had the option and we did not, we squandered that. So is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what I'm asking.
And that you would like that piece of it in the plan?
That's exactly what I'm asking.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I love that, okay.
I, I just want to be clear on that, because that may not turn around in six months. All right, we can, we, we can, we, so we already, we already have reached out to M D E, myself and Mr. Clack, we've reached out to M D E. We are waiting a meeting to discuss, so the Head Start and Early Head Start, I'm just giving you information, is not run by the state of Michigan. It is a federal program, okay? And it's in perpetuity, which means that it's not open for a discussion of who's going to have it. It is where it is, and that's where it's going to be, but we can put pressure on anything we decide to as a district. So I can outline a phrase, you and I, of number nine, and then if everyone agrees to what that looks like, then we, we go from there. But I, I just don't want to say early Head Start, because there's things behind it. Okay.
And point of information, where, yeah, where do we stand with the community partnership agreement? Is there, there a place in there for that? For the six-month agreement? Because it seems like we need to have done this six months ago.
So if, if the board, if it pleases the board for us to continue those conversations, you know, that goes along with S R, but it's, I, I would need to bullet it if that's something that the board. But I want to make sure that we have clear understanding as a board as.
Sorry, but.
What's your point?
Phase two of S R funds, does it have phase three with the community partnership agreement?
That's what I would say, that we, we would put.
Oh, okay, in S R three.
You, you get what I'm saying? That's where we, we could possibly put the information as a bullet, if it pleases the board, that that's something you want to work on, that's where I would put the bullet, is what I'm saying.
Mr. President?
Point, point of information.
But I would want the whole board to determine.
Didn't we vote on that, that we would be working on a community partnership agreements with the S R, and under S R three, it's mandated? That we, that we work with the community partners?
I, I don't, I'm not against, I just had a meeting the other, last week with a community partner that wants to, someone that wants to receive funding for us. It's not something that we're not going to do, but I'm saying if we're, if you want it in as a bullet in this focus, this is where we would put it. I'm not against doing it, or slowing down or stopping. I'm just saying, you asked, is it in here? I said, this is where I would put it if it pleases the board and you want to move forward with continuing those discussions and conversations about those partnerships, that's it. Or moving them forward, or getting some done.
Treasurer Luna?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the point that my colleague made about accepting it versus approving it. So I can see, you know, where she was going with that, because this is how you can achieve what you're doing now, and you're just getting more focused. So it, it doesn't make sense, we're accepting your plant, your path forward, right? Okay, and yeah, the, the central thing, I mean, yeah, you, you addressed it, at least for me, so I understand your point, and I see what you're saying now, so I'm good on that.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I need clarification. So we added a number nine to do the program you're talking about, right? In six months? Okay. I would ask the board that we really make sure we looking at, we're adding, but we're not taking away nothing.
Right.
You, you, you know, it's a, I, I agree with the early, I think it's, early childhood is what it's called, right? I agree with that. We keep adding on things, but financially, when I look at it, I don't see where, how in the world we gonna keep adding things and we're not taking away nothing? So I, I'm for it, let's, we could put it on there, for, I mean, I see that conversation would take longer than six months. I'm just looking at financially, where, staffing, you know, how, where at, I just, that's what I'm looking at. I just want the board, we got to talk about, you know, that deep stuff, but it's just a focus, so.
Point of information? Through to the president, through to Trey, to, to Mr. King, are you aware that, at least for the community partnership agreement, that it's already, that money has already been allocated and approved, the eighty-nine million dollars?
So.
So that's already there?
As, as I was saying, I was referencing early childhood, your point that you want to add on number nine, for six-month focus. I'm saying that I would like for us to make sure we have that conversation. So from my experience and what I've seen previously on the board, we have said we want to have a conversation, we never had a conversation. I, I'm just asking that we make sure we having these conversations, doing our work that we say we're supposed to do. That's all I'm asking. It just, we can keep saying that we're going to do it, but it seems like, I mean, from historical, when I look at it, it's always been kicked down the road. I just want to make sure we actually doing our work. That's it for me, Mr. President, appreciate it.
Okay, trustee Mc, McNeil?
I just want to say to the board and to the public, this proposal that Mr. Jones put up, six-month focus, that's what, eighty point, eighty-nine million dollars for this S R three that, that's inside of this proposal? We have allocated out of S R three over eighty-six million dollars, am I correct? And a lot of stuff in that strategic plan includes all of this. The most unique thing that's not in here is the G I S D. These are conversation pieces. I want the board to know that even though when you look at that strategic plan and add them to that strategic plan, we can go, well, hey, this is not going to work, let's do this here, let's do this, this is conversation. But we got to move forward, we have not did any renovation to the school, we have not, everybody has gotten raises, bonus, and we still have that renovation fund. Door riders should be almost in completion, Mr. Jones. Door riders should be almost in completion, Mr. Jones. Is there any way that they can do a walkthrough so they can see where this money is being spit, or spent, where some of this money is doing? They need to see door rider, they need to see potter. So we, out of ten schools, we are, we down to two that we have started renovating in June. My understanding, door rider will be complete. So potter kids and door rider kids sitting over there together will move over, we have a hole in place now, our door rider. So I think what's gonna help the board a lot to understand is they need to do a walkthrough, they need to have this here booked before them, and that eighty-six million dollars, you might think September twenty twenty-four is a long way off, but here we are in twenty twenty-three, and we have not moved forward on this money. So we got to have a focus point. Where do we start at? Everybody got great ideas. That doesn't mean we can't change nothing that's come before us, and because things are changing every day. We're gonna end up with our contractors, we're gonna end up with our people being able to do the work, and here, then the children still is not gonna have nice new healthy buildings in. So we got to start somewhere, and we, the superintendent's what we hired to do when we voted the strategic plan in. Mr. Jones has a deadline to get these things done, and we got to put the ball back in his court, and let's just move forward, instead of walking through gum on other things.
So, so the purpose of this, as I stated last week, was so that we are not, we're, we're human beings, okay? And because we carry titles doesn't mean we can do everything that is coming to the table. We can't do everything at one time. And that is currently what's going on. We cannot do everything at the same time. That's currently what's going on in an operational deficit district, in a district where we do not have enough staff to do our work. We're doing too, too, I understand that the community is coming to board members and saying things and wanting things to change and wanting this to happen. We can't do them all overnight. And so I'm asking that the board, it's, it's clearly stated in here that we refocus and just let's move the needle of the work. This is not a Mr. Jones thing. This is the work that we're supposed to be doing, and I'm just trying to move the needle of the work and get some things done. And if we're all focused on these things, then the part of it that the board has, the part of it that the administration has, and the part of it that the principals have, we can all be focusing on the same things to get the work done.
Trustee McIntyre.
So, to be clear, we're adding a number nine for early ed, like we discussed with the nuances that we discussed, is that accurate? And then we're removing the note on number four, is that accurate?
Removing central.
Huh?
Removing central.
Removing central, okay.
Yes.
And then I would like to request that in number one, that we add what trustee Perkins was talking about with the community benefits agreement, that we add some type of language to reinforce that in that section that's already there, that's already budgeted. That's what I would need to approve this. The community benefits agreement.
Oh, yeah, you want to add that to that.
Yeah, I mean, since we already voted, we already voted on it, and just a way of emphasizing it, yeah, and it's already funded and, and all that. President Clack?
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, I was over here taking notes, I'm sorry. Trustee Relaford.
Are we going to just accept it, or are you guys, do we need to make a motion for that? I just think accepted is just, is, is, I just think approving it would just get us in an area that we don't want to get in, you guys. Especially if it's gonna be a, it's a live document, it's a continuation, you know what I'm saying? It's, 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 uh, it's not final. So if we approve this, we're approving something that's not final, so it's continuing to move. So that's all I'm just saying, just accept it. We just accept it, that's what it's gonna be working on.
Vice President King, then Secretary Perkins.
I can understand the acceptance, but I would like for us to vote on this, to, so we all have input on what we're all focusing, focusing on, because let's see, I may have issue with it, and I just accepted, and I go back and say, no, that's not what I wanted, but the board voted on X, so you act as a whole, and what I'm thinking on, as we give direction to our superintendent, this is what we want him to do, like focus on for the next six months, even though there are things may come up, but this has also helped the board out as well, as we have been everywhere. I said it last week. So, I, I think we need to vote on this, uh, that it's, it's direction to give to our superintendent with the focus on, I mean, it's direction. For me, that's, that's for me. To my, it's, it's up to, you know, to the board in that regard, but.
We got to start somewhere.
Thanks.
Secretary Perkins.
I was just gonna say, you know, um, as long as it's not something that Superintendent Jones said that was final, and we can change or tweak, then I don't see the big deal. Um, you know, I, I could be in favor of the six-month proposal, but because this is on record, it's on record now. So he said that, that was a statement made, so I think you'll be okay. I do.
Call for the question.
Support.
Okay. Secretary Perkins.
Yes.
Call for the question.
Oh, yes, I mean, I call for, call for the question. Yeah, that's what I said, yes.
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 I'm sorry, I didn't call anybody's name, forgive me.
That's okay, you looked at it.
You're doing great, you're doing great, come on.
I'm sorry, I got a lot going on up here, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry, Vice President King. Imagine I just said anybody's name, uh, uh, please forgive me.
Uh-uh, you're okay, we're okay.
But I, I vote yes.
We hear you.
All right, myself, President Clack, I'll vote yes.
Okay, now, take the vote. Do we take the vote?
Okay, so we are voting now to approve the six-month focus plan. Okay. Secretary Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre.
Clarification.
Yes.
With the changes?
With the changes. You have to say with the, so we're making an amendment.
You're making an amendment to the motion.
So, to a motion to approve twenty-one point one-six, the superintendent's proposed focus with the amendments.
See?
No.
Trustee McNeil.
Yes.
Vice President King.
Yes.
Trustee Relaford.
No.
Treasurer Luna.
Yes.
Yeah, you can say maybe it's just, you need to be excuse.
Myself, President Clack, um, I will vote yes.
Uh, yes to no.
So, the motion passes by a vote of five yes to two no. Please continue, Mr. Jones.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve batch resolutions one, uh, twenty-five point six, twenty-five point seven, twenty-five point eight, twenty-five point nine, uh, for approval.
So moved.
Support.
It has been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
I'd like to have a discussion.
Okay. Trustee Relaford.
From you to Superintendent Jones, can Assistant Superintendent Murphy explain what these grants are? I thought, I think the public should know.
Yes, ma'am. So twenty-five point six is our consolidated application, and so that contains all of our title allocations, which are our federal funds, so that includes Title One, Title Two, and Title Four, and those funds are received on behalf of the scholars because we serve scholars that are eligible for free and reduced school lunch. So that's where that allocation is for, and it's for to impact scholars' academic outcomes and improve the instruction around core academics. The next action item, twenty-five point seven, is the authorization to purchase items from a McKinney Vento grant. McKinney Vento are our scholars who are identified as homeless at any point of the school year, and so those funds are directly used to service those scholars. There are some stopgap transportation measures in there if scholars need assistance or support with basic need items, hygiene items, clothing, anything to help fill those gaps when families are in transition. And also was an opportunity for us to help with some transitional night stays. Twenty-five point eight is the authorization to purchase items from the Section ninety-seven grant, those are.
No, no, we're not doing that.
I'm sorry, legislative grants that the governor set aside to address school safety, so those are specific safety grants, and also ninety-seven D also represents a school safety grant for critical incident mapping.
Thank you.
Hey, is there any more discussion? Okay, seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve resolution twenty-five point six, twenty-five point seven, twenty-five point eight, and twenty-five point nine will be conducted by a roll call vote. As I call your name, please say yes or no to approve this motion. Trustee Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee McIntyre.
Yes.
Trustee McNeil.
Yes.
Treasurer Luna.
Yes.
Trustee Relaford.
Yes.
Trustee King.
Yes.
Myself, myself, President Clack, yes, motion passed by a vote of seven and a step. Okay, thank you, Mr. Jones.
You're welcome.
Now, do any board members have any remarks or comments before we adjourn?
I want to start out with the, um, the training and the conference that's going to Orlando. I think that there's a part of it that I think all board members should participate in, and, and that's the CUBE. When you guys register for the CUBE, do you, did you understand what that part, what the queue? This is the greatest opportunity for the Flint Community School Board. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
This training here, we be the first one to ever, ever, seven board member, uh, level one certified board members, which allow us to go to that urban conference. In this urban conference, you're gonna have different rooms and different training and stuff that you go to, and I would behold that, it's maybe like, I am a member of that organization, so all of my, um, events is included in my price. I just think that your board members should go to the queue, especially, you know, go to the queue, because that's where you're gonna meet all the urban school districts at, all the different things from the public school. And I believe, according to Ms. Perkins, could you explain what you was told that, that you could, that?
I was just told, and this is by other board members, uh, I mean, other boards, because I'm affiliated with a lot of them, and they said that was one of the best classes for us to take, because we're in an urban setting, and you get so much information on, that would help this board and how we function. So I would urge that, you know, you consider supporting that. It's called a queue.
And, Mr. President, to, um, our executive administration, for them to attend that, that event, I think that's the one from sixty-nine, it's gonna be fine, I hear, and the sixty-nine, that's where they come in, all the district. And it's, uh, if you go, hopefully you've been getting information from them, uh, your artillery, your agenda. Ms. Pam, what was that cost for them to attend that? It's just a hundred dollars more per board member. If you would like to attend, I just think that, um, Mr. Jones, uh, that shouldn't be a problem if the board said they want to attend. I don't want to be the only one there, because I am a member there, and it's included in my price, but I would like for all the board members to participate in all the different training, and, uh, it's different from MASB. I never been to the national before, and this is gonna be really great, and, but I think it'd be great if you can get the approval to attend those other, um, conferences. We don't want to be walking around looking, peeping in the window, because we can't afford a hundred dollars. So, being that.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Did you make a motion, Mr. Perkins?
No, I wasn't. Anyone else?
Yet.
Treasurer Luna.
Yeah, Mr. President, I think we have, um, a unique opportunity to really, uh, bring transformational impact to our students and to empower our teachers, and I'm glad this board approved this six-monthly focused tonight. I mean, from school closures to new schools, to renovating schools, to working with our unions, to, you know, how we can move forward in that process, it's all in here, but I just want to make sure that we stick to this framework, and we're very intentional, because we need to retain our teachers, we have to close schools, but we have to do both. And I think there's a process and a way forward, but we have to really be intentional about how we do it, so those are my comments.
Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Vice President King.
Recently, I had visited Brunel and DTM to read to the scholars. That was a wonderful time. I had read to first grade students, and the reaction, it was just wonderful, just reading to them during March Reading Month. The environment was great, the teachers loved it, the kids absolutely loved it, we had a great time. So, I just wanted to report to the board that I did that, and I'm excited to move our district forward. I, I just want to make sure that we're doing the right things on the right times, in the structure. We need to do that. And I would also encourage our board to, for us to adopt norms, as MASB has, you know, really suggested for our boards, um, inside the state of Michigan, to adopt norms, uh, norms and procedures. I call the social contract as our kid, as our scholars do, um, with capturing kids' hearts. I, I think it'd be a wonderful opportunity for us as district leaders to show our district that, hey, the Board of Education is even doing the social contract that is, you know, done inside each classroom. It'd be a good example that we'll be setting, uh, in that regard. Also, I would like to even just remind our colleagues, our district employees is looking at us, our community is looking at us. We need to be professional, excellence, integrity, the whole nine. The community is watching us to make decisions that will impact Flint Community Schools beyond, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice President King. Secretary Perkins.
I'd like to make a motion that we go to that class. I think it's very important for all of us to attend.
Okay.
So moved. Support.
Okay.
I got some discussion, Mr. President.
Yeah, I was, and I didn't get a chance to make my remarks, so as long as we can get a chance to, but we can get back to, there's discussion, Vice President King.
So, from my understanding, we were able to sign up ourselves to that class, and, I mean, if a motion were binding us to go to a class that we, we have a choice to go to, not saying I'm opposed to the class, but also, I mean, this is binding us to go to a class, let's say it may not be what an individual board member may like to do. You, I, I wouldn't recommend binding a board member to go somewhere, let's say if another class is at another time that they intrigued by, I mean, you give that person that opportunity as well, so I'm still have to think about that. I'm completely with my comments, Mr. President.
Point of information, is Secretary Perkins requiring us with this motion to go?
I wasn't requiring, I'm just saying that I wanted to go to it. You have the option not to.
Well, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm not, if I'm curtaining from wrong, but if you make a motion, she said make, she'd make a motion, they'll be all attend the class.
Well, that wasn't like mandatory, it's just, well, I would make a motion that I'd be sent to it. How about that?
You can just attend the class, though, can't you?
It's not a class, number one.
It's not a class.
No.
Can I speak? Here's what the motion should be.
Let me, let me.
I'm sorry.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
The motion is that you have opportunity to div, to visit different workshop, and you have to pay for those workshops. Now, if you want to pay for them out of your pocket when you get there, that's fine. If you go through the agenda and look at something that you want to take, you need to advise Pam so she can put it through, so it can get paid for. That's the challenge. So if you don't want to, or you want to pay for them out of your pocket when you get there, that's fine, but while she's booking these training and everything, it is best that you get them paid for while she's booking them, so it'll be attached to your, and you have the agenda of all the training, if that's what you choose to do, but once you get there, you will have to be responsible for paying it, and I don't know if they had, had a reimbursement.
Point of information.
Vice President King.
If I'm making a mistake.
We're not a point of information, can I have the floor?
Good.
Okay. I want to make sure I'm right. So, we receive a registration link for, this is Pam, Ms. Be, are you able to respond to the, is she able to respond to this? Okay. So, we receive the invitation link to register for the class. So, we receive the invitation link to register for the class you want, right, to go to, right? Already, or?
The registration, the, the link that you received was confirmation of your registration, and then there were links in there for you to, like, get badges, and there, um, there's information for other workshops, but they don't have a full list, Johnson and I was looking over this, or Tim Johnson and I was looking over this, they don't have a full list of all the classes of all the sections. So, the link that you got was just for your confirmation of your registration, and it has a few other.
Okay, so, so, when we, how will we, we will be able to sign up for classes? Is it sign up then, or is it, this is an extra, I'm gonna call it extracurricular, for lack of a better term, class that we could go to, basically outside of that conference, but a part of that conference, right?
Right.
Okay, so, basically, we're just asked, well, a motion was made to pay for that entirely, for, entirely for the board to go.
So, can I just clarify this?
Yes.
The queue with, with, uh, Secretary Perkins was referring to, it's not a class, I want to make that clear, there, it is a luncheon.
Yes.
And then there is a sort of reception. That's, that's what they, I think he referred to really was the reception that happens from, I don't know if you say six to nine. So that's what they're referring to, and it is an extra cost for both.
Okay, point, continuing on my point, so, trustee McNeil, can I do that? Do you, trustee McNeil, Mr. President?
Trustee McNeil.
So, we paying for, so is this luncheon supposed to be a working lunch?
It's not, if you, you know how M S S B, they pay for everything. At this, the national, this is where the sixty-nine, that's, uh, and she gave you what they're supposed to be doing from sixty-nine. The brochure has been printed, you can pull up the brochure, I got it today, they sent it.
Could you send that to me, please?
Uh, okay, I sure will. So, they pulled up the brochure, so then you can see exactly, what is it that I want to do? I just think that if from six to nine is the, what'd you call it, Pam, the luncheon, and, and, and all the district gets together, and, and then that's where you can, whatever we do. I never been there before, I just hear all the other district been going, and it's, uh, first time that we can get together. So you can look at the brochure, and I sent it to you, but then Pam can say, you can say, well, I want this, Mr. Clack said, I want to go to this. So then she can put that in the bill, so when you get there, you don't have to cough up them, I think it's a hundred dollars?
Okay, so, all right.
Kirk.
So, to, to Ms. Beer, I want to make sure I'm clarifying, clarifying how that's supposed to work. We tell you ahead of time what class we want to attend, right?
I think this one is a little different from M A S B.
Right.
They do that with M A S B, but with this one, I haven't received anything saying you can register people for other classes. I think this one is a little.
This is, like, an attache to it, right, really?
Yeah.
That, that, that would not be so considered covered in that, right?
Right. I think all of these general sessions, they're covered in our registration.
So this is extra?
This is something extra.
Extra, okay, that's, that's, I just want to make sure I understand it before I go.
Okay.
Thanks.
So, I would like to make my last final comments before.
We in a motion?
Oh, we, oh, my bad.
So what do we, uh, so do, uh, do we need approval for people to, if they wanted, this is a question, not a motion, we in a motion, but we got to clarify what is that we asking for. So, uh, we are saying that, uh, we are proving that anything that you see that you want, that, um, between nine to thirty, that we can approve, that you guys can approve and go to it. I'm set, because I am a member there, so all of my stuff is included in my registration, and, you know, and I won't have to pay, that's a saving by itself. So it's up to the board, what do you want to do? If you think you want to go to different things, but who approving it, do you need approval from Mr. Jones for them to go? Mr. Jones?
When I was asked, let me say, when I was asked, because it's an additional cost, and in the resolutions, you guys approved paying for registration, parking, transportation, all this other stuff, but not anything extra like that, so, yes, I agree.
This is different, yeah. This is different from M A S B, they would have charged everything together.
Okay. Mr. President?
Vice President King.
Okay. So, for me, I think I would rather see information first of what that is, I mean, it sounds good, Mr. Trustee McNeil, don't, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, I just don't want you guys, when you get there, and you like, wow, I want to go, and I want to go here, and I want to go there.
I, I get that.
Okay.
I, I, I think in the future, as we probably go out to different conferences, this is a great learning moment, that we know what to expect, I mean, all of us are new, probably never been to a national conference in that capacity, so, it'd be a learning moment, but...
They don't feed you.
I, I wouldn't, um, I would not, I'm not going to support, um, adding that extra cost at, at the moment, because I don't, I really don't see, um, how a luncheon would probably impact me right at the moment, but I don't have the information, so, I can't vote on nothing, I don't have the information for the details of what that includes. That's all for me. Thanks.
Okay, are we still in discussion?
So, the, we can just, I can pull, what, do you guys want to vote on it, or pull it?
Are we voting, or are we?
I'm going.
Withdraw, okay, well, we can just withdraw the motion?
Uh, we're gonna withdraw, do you want to get a board opportunity to vote?
We, we don't have much time between now and this conference, so if you want to take it to your final.
I'm going, I'm taking that class.
Well, okay.
I was just gonna suggest, if you wanted to take it to the meeting you have next Wednesday, maybe that will help you.
And then you have your books and everything.
I'm just trying to, we don't have much time.
We can just take it to the meeting, and is that?
Okay, I can rescind it until the next meeting.
Okay, everyone agree with that? So you're amending your motion to?
To rescinding.
Oh, you're rescinding?
To rescinding it.
Okay, okay.
To the next meeting.
Okay, all right, cool, so, we're back to, we're back to final remarks.
Yes.
Okay, so, it'll be trustee Rutherford and then myself.
What'd you say now?
Final remarks.
Uh, I want to make a, I...
Everyone, I thought everyone made their remarks except for trustee Rutherford.
I thought Laura did say, I thought you...
Oh, I didn't know we had a limit, we only have one.
I don't know. I said, I'm just saying, final remarks, I thought it was you make, it's not final. So, I mean, if you would like to go make another remark, go ahead, I'm sorry.
This is a remark that I would like to make. On February the eighth, Laura McIntyre and Joyce Ellis McNeil was removed from chairman, and it was said that due, according to trustee Dillon, that we were removed because we threatened and harassed and threatened Mr. Jones. If we look at policy fifty-three and forty-two of your bylaw, if, and follow the process, the process was not even followed. Mr. Jones, when I spoke with him, he did not say that Laura McIntyre and Joyce McNeil threatened him. We cannot do corporate punishment without following policy. And if you look at fifty-three, forty-two, district employee must notify their immediate supervisor, supervisor of any threat that they have witnessed, received, or have been told that another person has witnessed or received, supervisor must complete an incident report and forward to the district director of safety and security. The director will conduct an initial investigation and forward the incident report to the Workplace Violent Prevention Committee. Failure to report incidents of workplace violence and or making false reports under this policy will constitute a violation of this policy, which may result in disciplinary action up to and including termination of employment at the sole discretion of the district. And the question I asked when we went back and reviewed, the reason to remove Laura McIntyre of chairman, I found it very disheartening, because you did not follow process, you did not even do due process. We have five board, seven board members, after you guys took your position as officer, there was only three chair seats left, which meant Laura McIntyre, Joyce McNeil, and Melinda fulfilled these chair. Then you removed Joyce and Laura off based on maybe misspoken words, no investigation, because normally, when you find a threat, it's very serious. My suggestion that because you did this improperly, then you have to go to robbery rules forty-seven, forty-seven, eighth, or eight forty-seven, which said that if you make a motion that violate this policy, that vote is done. Mister Dillon, is it true that Mister Jones said Joyce Ellis McNeil and Laura McIntyre harassed and threatened him? If it's so, then he will have to follow this process, due process, you cannot inject corporate punishment on hearsay. When that, uh, threat was made by board members to Mister Jones when I was president, he had to follow due process and investigation, and investigation would prove whether these things are true. You cannot remove a board member, elected official, from something on hearsay. Am I correct?
Mr. President, I'm not gonna engage in this conversation.
You have to answer it, though, Dillon, isn't it? You moved, removed them, you gotta answer it.
This board votes remove, you guys walked out, this board.
It wasn't a bottomless.
Whoa, whoa, you're, you're out of order.
No.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna respond, go ahead and respond.
So first off, I've done nothing, this board votes as a body, when you guys walked out, it was a board decision. I'm not gonna engage in this, we have higher issues to worry about, period, and that's my response.
But in the public.
Wait, 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 wait.
You're right, you're right, go ahead.
Were you finished, Treasurer Luna?
Yes, I was.
Okay, you're not gonna engage, then I will move on.
No, she had her hands up.
Okay, well, trustee Rutherford was in front of you.
My trustee.
Okay, go ahead, trustee McIntyre.
So, given that this, this has emerged, I want to ask trustee Luna and superintendent Jones, is it true that you made this statement, superintendent Jones, that Dr. McNeil and I threatened and harassed you to, Treasurer Luna, because that is something that is, that is slanderous, in my opinion, if it's not true, and it needs to be addressed, and it needs to be answered, according to our bylaws? So, and if, if you did not, I, you need to make the statement that you did not, in response to Treasurer Luna's statement in an open board meeting, that we threatened and harassed you. Because I, this is the first I've heard of it.
So, I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna answer this by saying, if we would like to, uh, discuss this in a different setting, I would, because there's information that has already been foiled by a board member, that the information that we have as, as a district is there, um, and has already been foiled.
No, I'm asking you right now.
I'm not gonna engage.
I'm asking you right now, superintendent Jones.
I'm not gonna engage.
Trustee Luna stated in an open meeting, no, I have the floor.
If he's not gonna engage.
I have the floor. I have the floor. Trustee Luna said in an open meeting. That Dr. McNeil and I harassed, and, that you stated to him, that Dr. McNeil and I harassed and threatened you. That is patently false, or, well, I don't know what you said to him, actually, but the, the material aspect of the matter is that I did not, I'm speaking for myself, and if that is true, you need to say on the record, because this was said in an open meeting on February eighth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, so, I'm not going to engage totally in this conversation, but when we talk about those two words that are being used, um, there's also been spaces where, when we talk about threats or anything of that nature, people have taken those comments or those words and have inflated them to harm to me, and, and people trying to threaten me and do harm to me. No one has threatened me to do.
Have I threatened to do harm?
Wait, 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 wait.
No one has threatened to do any harm to the superintendent in any physical nature, or have threatened me in a way that would do harm to me or anyone that I love, okay? I'm answering your question to the best of my ability to not exploit any information that I need to seek, uh, conversation with either an attorney or someone else. I'm not going to put us all out there, and the reason why the superintendent sits back and do not comment on every little thing is because we're running a district, and we can't just put everything that's going on, on, at this table, out there in the public, and that is not not being transparent, that's being smart about how we handle this work and the things that we're doing in the district. So I'm not going to engage totally in this conversation in this setting, but I will go into a closed session if anyone has any question about this employee.
I should, would you? Mr. President? I'm not done.
Okay, wait, I didn't recognize you.
I just answered.
But I did not recognize you.
But I still have the floor.
You're out of order. He just answered. If his answer isn't sufficient for you, then that's, that's something, but he just answered, we're not gonna go back and forth.
I have the floor.
I, I, I did not recognize you, you did not have the floor, he did.
I did have the floor, he was answering me when I had the floor.
You're out of order.
I appeal.
You are out of order, I didn't, hey.
I appeal the decision of the chair.
What decision did I make? You're out of order.
That's, that's it.
You're out of order.
Rules means you don't know how to run a meeting.
Okay, you're out of order.
I appeal.
That's your first warning.
I appeal the decision.
That's your first warning.
He needs to be removed, Mr. President.
Point of order.
That's your first warning.
Point, point of order.
She needs to be removed. You can't do this.
Point of order.
Ask for her to be removed.
Mr. President, point of order.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, Vice President King.
She appealed, so why she appeal?
I'm, I'm, I'm in a point of order, okay? Bylaws require us to be respectful, be professional, well, I don't have it on me right now, but we can go through the line. This is not professional conduct at this table.
It is not.
This is not. So, my point is, let's handle our, the, the parliamentary procedures with respect and professionalism. That's all my, that's my point. Thanks.
Mr. President?
Okay.
I know.
I did not recognize you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No.
There's a motion on the floor.
I did not, I did not recognize you.
There's a motion on the.
Hey, you're out of order. Can we remove, can we remove, can we remove her? Can we get her out of here? Can we get her out of here, please?
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Time for her to go.
Point of information.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
She, she did call for an appeal, that's her right for an appeal.
I didn't recognize her.
I, I know, but she, she is able to give an appeal, so an appeal, if her appeal fails, then you could proceed with your ruling, Mr. Chair. Do, do you see my point, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you wait until I recognize you?
Point of order, an appeal to the chair does not have to be recognized. I've appealed the motion to the chair.
What's your appeal?
That you ruled me out of order.
Is there a second?
There's a second, you did rule out of order.
Okay. All right, any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
We, we, this is embarrassing.
It's embarrassing when you voted us out.
Not just for this board as a body, but for this district, we can't keep doing these things at, at board remarks, to drop these, I'm gonna call them bombs, I mean, I just said we're focused on things like renovating schools, building new schools, every time we do stuff like this, partners, voters, teachers, we, we have so many monumental issues, and we do this BS every time, from the same individuals, guess what? This board voted to remove them.
For what reason?
You don't have to have a reason.
You don't have to like the decision, you don't have to agree with it, it was made, had they not walked out the meeting, it probably wouldn't have happened, but we know for a fact that one of these people, over the years, has harassed admin, administrators. It's in the news, it's documented, the previous board, uh, trustee McIntosh wrote out her, how to, how to address people. We can't harass staff, we can't do these ridiculous things at, at the end of the meeting, it's embarrassing. We're not talking about kids are improving their outcomes, we're talking about some BS, and it's embarrassing. She should be embarrassed, but this whole body should be embarrassed.
I'm definitely embarrassed, okay, wait.
Tired of it.
So, yes, go ahead.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
What was embarrassing, what's humiliating, there's no policy saying that two, a board member cannot get up and walk out at the end of the meeting, and it was made exactly during the time that we had it now, so that's not the issue. And, but the issue was that the, the reason, you can remove an officer with or no reason. However, when it came to the chairperson of the committee, you guys voted us where we cannot even, according to the notes, the minutes, and you keep, and you come to the public and say, board members don't come to the committee, but in your minute, all committee, and you can help us with that, that we were voted from all committee meetings. Where in the bylaw that you can vote to remove an elected official from all committee meetings? And the reason we bringing this up, because the allegation was made. Now, Mr. Jones, so we can do it in closed door, we can. Mr. President, I'm coming to you because you're the president. Look at these policies and see where did we violate a policy, even if I got up and walked out at the end of a meeting. It does not warrant such harsh, harsh vote like you did, and now you're going back and saying, I'm voting you out because you walked out at the meeting. Well, it's easier to walk out of the meeting than be sitting here like we doing now. And you, then you get so, it's on the zone, that it was due to those reasons. And if those are not the reason, if somebody misspoken, you just said. We would continue this, and I'm asking the president, did you look at your parliamentary procedure, I have put this on records, it's on record why you said you removed the chairperson from subcommittee. I can remove, you with or with no reason, any officer. But it didn't say that you can remove a person because they got up and left out a meeting that they felt was getting hostile. So, Mr. President, I'm gonna end this conversation, but could you commit with having discussion, a decent discussion with the board as a whole, just board members?
Would I commit to do what now?
We need to have a board ma- meeting as a whole to resolve this issue. It doesn't have to be public, but it have to be resolved. If you guys, or do we have to take it to a point where we can get a legal opinion and said that the motion that was made based on the reason that was given in the open meeting was due to bylaw fifty-three forty-two?
Okay.
That's all I got to say.
I will not commit to that, and you go ahead and do what you have to do.
Mr. President.
Your fair, Mr. Vice President.
I would make it.
It's not a threat, but I need to get it resolved.
Okay, go ahead.
Do I have the floor, Mr. President? I will make a point to our district employees that's watching, because as I've stated, people watch us, even our scholars watch us. The behavior that was just exhibited would not be tolerated in the classroom. And we are adults, and the time we spending on an appeal, or in, in this, this discussion, we could be spending on SFR funds, we could be spending on academic partnership agreement, plan for a sustainable future, my, the, my foundation of partner support, staffing, board superintendent communications, you know, continued work with renovations, we could be talking about transformational things for our scholars in our classrooms. When we argue and fight at this board table, who suffered the most? The scholars. Our scholars suffer the most because we are focused on board issues, rather than this district. This has been going on for decades, and the culture needs to stop up here, this is ridiculous. Because our district is in the state it is because our board can't get it together. I am frustrated to the point that our, our scholars are not getting the service they need from board members. Our community elected us, every elected, we all elected officials at this table, our community elected us to do a job, make sure our, our district is running. This, this petty stuff that we're doing right now is ridiculous. A board vote, we, there was, there was a vote made, there was vote made, accept the vote. But if you don't like the vote, so.
Point of information.
Mr. President, I don't recognize a point of information.
Wow.
Okay, continue on.
Okay, my issue is, we keep going back and forth, beating the horn on board issues when we can have a governance meeting that's so simple to attend, but we tried to have that one day, but it was just, you know, I'm not even gonna go there. My point is, we need to talk about board issues in a governance meeting, not at a board table, not at the board, regular board meeting. Our scholars are watching, our district employees are watching, we talk about morale, we talk about how people are leaving. That's why people don't want to come back to Flint Community Schools, because of this stuff here. When your top is not doing right, why would I follow a district? Why? I would like to say that the teachers, the staff, the students, whoever works in the district, I appreciate you for being, working in Flint Community Schools, it is a rough job at the moment because when your top is, again, I'll say it lastly, from my last comment, when the top fights, scholars suffer. The Board of Education right now is suffering, I mean, our, right now is fighting, and our scholars are not being, we not moving on any type of things right now to move the district forward. This is because of board issues, that can be related back to governance. Have a governance workshop, I asked, in our, in our, what was our meeting?
You put it on the agenda and folks are parked in parking lot.
I, I put it in the.
Say it.
I put it on the governance agenda for us to talk about. And it was shot down because, no, M A S B don't need to come in here, we need to have training, simple. You have a governance workshop with M A S B, we move on from board issues. But when it come to this board table, I'm imploring my colleagues, let's talk about transformational things for our scholars. This is what we was elected to do, we know we in a deficit, we got, we got eighty-six million dollars, but this fighting is not going nowhere. I mean, Mr. President.
Okay, did somebody call the question so we can, on my ruling?
I make a motion, call the question on the, on the ruling of the chair.
Thank you, okay, Secretary Perkins.
It needs to be seconded by somebody, I call the question.
Support.
Okay. Secretary Perkins.
No.
Um, trustee McIntyre.
No.
Uh, secretary McNeil. I mean, I'm sorry, Treasurer McNeil, trustee McNeil, okay, Treasurer Luna.
And this is, the affirmative to support your ruling?
Did it, yes.
Yes.
Just call the question, you just said.
Sorry, sorry, yes.
Oh, this is called a question, I'm sorry. Trustee Rufford. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Vice President King.
Yes.
Myself, President Clack, yes, so.
It fails, it fails.
Three, three tie.
So it failed.
So it fails, okay, so now, moving forward, um.
We're still in discussion.
Discussion for what?
Calling the question, because it's.
Oh, I'm sorry, all right, so, any more discussion, discussion?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll end with this, Mr. President.
I had my hand up.
We've wasted so much time on this, and to my colleague's point, we're here to do a job. I ran on specific things.
I saw you.
To empower teachers, to support a curriculum that's robust so our scholars can be successful in life, to renovate and build new schools. And I knew that coming into this, that we had a, a challenge as a board, but also with some of the colleagues, and that's fine, we don't have to see eye to eye on stuff, but we just can't, we have to stop doing these things at the end of the meetings.
It's not voting.
We have a decent meeting, we had a great meeting last week, in my opinion, and we're, we're focused on the wrong things because people are upset about, about this board too. It, it needs to stop, it's embarrassing.
So, thank you, Mr. President, so the issue is, this isn't taking up unnecessary time, this is about an illegal vote. This is about, I was elected to do a job as a board member, which includes serving on subcommittee meetings, and there was an illegal vote that was taken to remove myself and Dr. McNeil off of all subcommittee meetings, which is not permissible under, there's no bylaws for that. And so, one of the statements that was made when this was being done was that myself and Dr. McNeil had, it was reported that Superintendent Jones had reported to trustee Luna that we had threatened and harassed him, which he may or may not have, have stated, but it is not true. And I would like to state for the record, and I need to have it on the record in an open meeting so that I have documentation, if there is, has been at any time when I have threatened or harassed anybody.
Point of information. If I recall, I sent you all an email that explained why you were being removed. If I did, if, if, yes, is that not what I said in the email?
Point of, point of order, are you asking, you need to ask in the form of a question under point of information.
I did, I said if I were, okay, I'm sorry, did it not send you an email that explained? The, did it not send an email that explained the reasons why you all were being removed from your?
Are you aware that the email was not sufficient to explain, and that this is still not according to the bylaws? You can explain whatever you want.
Well, you had thirty days to do so.
Point of order, point of information rather. Mr. President Clack.
Point of information is a question.
Oh, question, the question would be, you said you sent it, what day did you send that email?
I, listen, you asked me a question, what day, that's, you have the grievances, then you all find out. I told you the reasons why, the reasons why are in email, black and white, timestamped and dated, those are the reasons.
Point of order.
What's your point?
I have the floor, you were asking a point of information, you're exceeding the point of information.
She asked a question, so that's.
I have the floor.
Continue.
So, removing myself and Joyce Ellis McNeil from all subcommittees, there's, there's, that's, that's not permissible, it's not, it's not legal. And furthermore, again, and I want to be very, very clear about this because I'm really tired of having people refer to a point in time in the past when I have supposedly threatened or harassed any employee or any board member. I have never received a complaint, no one has ever reported me to H R. If indeed that there are, there are legal definitions for harassments and threats, and they need to follow due diligence so that I can properly defend myself, the only one.
You just, is it true that on July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, Trune Law Firm has an official complaint from a board, from a Ms. Don Prey that has one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine different incidents dated? This is paperwork documented.
The point of, point of information, are you not aware of the recon investigation
that investigated those allegations, and I was cleared of any of the accusations?
You just stated that you would not then accuse, there's no complaints, yes, sir, go ahead.
Were you not aware, point of information?
He has the floor, you're out of order.
Point of information.
You're out of order.
I'm in a point of order.
You're out of order.
Mr. Chair, I would simply say, can, can the chair not go back and forth? Let, let trustee McIntyre finish her statements, and we move on.
Please, I have the floor.
Just please, Mr. President, just.
So, there has never been any complaint that has been, all the complaints against me have been disproven and thrown out, and I am really tired of the lies and the accusations that are continuing to be perpetuated in these meetings. And I'm calling for them to stop, unless you have documentation or proof, otherwise, otherwise, I'm going to, uh, need them to be stated on the record so that I have them for the record. So, I'm demanding that you cease to say that I'm threatening and harassing unless you have proof and you follow through with, uh, with the documentation so that I can go through due process, because this is, this is enough. As far as, the only one who's actually been assaulted and harassed and threatened has been myself, and the recon investigation did, the findings in the recon investigation did show that two individuals had threatened and harassed and assaulted me. No one else threatened, harassed, and assaulted anybody else. So, that needs to stop being repeated, and it needs to stop being, being said because I'm, I'm tired of it, and I, I am, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna allow it or stand for it anymore, and I will take action.
Okay, thank you, do what you gotta do, did you wanna say something?
I just want to clear up the air. Those reports you read was true, even the one Mr. Jones filed to complain against Laura, uh, administration, against Laura McIntyre, McIntyre, Karen McIntosh, several other board member of threats and harassment. At that point, we was advised that you have to do an investigation according to your policy, and recon came in and did the investigation. I forwarded that investigation immediately to the board members, you have the findings of that investigation. Who violated those policies as it relates to extortion or whatever? It was proven that those board members did violate, however, it did not, in their report, it states that Laura McIntyre was not a part of any violation. We have to honor what is truth and what's not. This is my reputation and on the line, that I have a life outside of here, and I do not live in that type of world where I threaten and harass, harass anybody. Now, if you say, well, I'm upset and I can't take this disrespect that I felt and I walked out of a meeting, it did not, it was not a quorum, it was in a meeting such as this. Only thing we're saying that, how can you guys, if we walk us seven board members and ban? Cause I can come to the meeting, but I want you calling the police off and arresting me and Laura cause we had a subcommittee, can't even come to the committee as a whole, is that the case? Cause according to you guys made the vote and it's in the meeting, that you took the rights of us to come to subcommittee meetings and meetings? Do you, if I did that to you guys, you would be sitting over here saying the same thing. But I would never do that to my colleague. I would never vote you off because I'm upset at you or something, I would never mistreat you. I would never do anything to mistreat you and disrespect you. That's all I'm saying, be fair. Because I don't need a position to get anywhere, and you're talking about we making the dish bad. If you're gonna do exposure, you're doing fairly, you go by the book, we went by the book. And if you don't like the book, change it, but don't sit up here and say that these two over here, and you wouldn't have this six-month plan, one for these two over here, we fought for that plan. So don't sit here and try to tear my integrity down and my character down and put me down because you got some type of animosity in your heart, and you don't know how to express it, but use an illegal vote. And I love you all, I'm done, Mr. Clack.
Okay, what are we doing?
We can go home.
Okay, we're in the field, yes, it's time to vote, let's go ahead and vote. Secretary Perkins.
Mr. President, could you restate the affirmative and the negative?
We were in a three, three tie.
For the, for the call to the question, but.
Yes.
They're voting yes, what does that mean?
We're, we're, we're voting yes, I'm sorry.
So, point, we're in appeal of removing trustee McIntyre, that's where we're in appeal of, right, correct?
No, we were in appeal.
It failed, that failed.
No, that's not what failed, we voted that I, that on, by ruling to her being out of order, that's what we voted on.
That's your in appeal.
Right, so, right, that's what we voted on, we haven't voted on my ruling to remove her yet.
Okay.
So we're voting on, we're, oh yeah, I'm ready to go home too, so, we're voting on her, my, the remove, my improper.
Ruling.
Ruling, okay, Secretary Perkins.
So you want to say?
No, 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 no. Okay, wait a minute, we're voting on my ruling of being improper, go ahead. Secretary Perkins.
Yes.
Okay, trustee McNeil, McIntyre.
But yes, that you were improper?
That I was out of, that I was out of line, that you said that I was, that my ruling, okay, there we go.
Yes.
Okay, Treasurer Luna.
No.
Uh, trustee Rufford. Okay, so Vice President King.
Abstention for me, I'm sorry, I, I, I left and went to restroom, I'm sorry. I think that would be unfair for me to try to vote, sorry.
Vice President King.
No.
Myself, no, okay.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Support.
Support.
Okay.
I didn't make my remarks.
I didn't either.
Oh, she didn't.
Neither did I.
She didn't get a chance, I, it, it won't be long for me.
Neither will mine.
Um, I'm bewildered after everything I just heard, it's, it's news to me, some of it is and some of it is not. But, Mr. Jones, I would just say to you, I would ask you to address Dr. Wolf tonight, and I won't go any further, but you all, it's a better way for us to handle this, it's a better way. And how can we expect what I experienced with Dr. Wolf not to happen when this happens? But I hope I showed you all how to handle it, you remove yourself from it. So, I'm asking you all, let's do better, just do better. You can't control anyone, but you can't control yourself. And just because it need to be said, does it need to come from you? That's it.
Okay, my final remarks. First, before I get started, I would like to apologize for a remark that I made to trustee, uh, trustee McIntyre earlier today. Might have been seen as dislike mildly disrespectful, um, I apologize. Moving forward, I take this very, very seriously. Very, very seriously. Being an elected official, being on the school board, being the president, this is very serious to me. So with that being said, um, I've been reviewing, um, previous actions taken by the board, and I have some concerns. And, uh, a- as board, as a board, we're fiduciaries. And what I mean by we're fiduciaries, it means we have a duty to act in the best interest of the Flint Community Schools, and put the Flint Community Schools' interests above our own. And put the Flint Community Schools' interests above our own. As fiduciaries, we must follow policy and law. So I have questions about the Congress contract provision for accumulated paid time off upon retirement. Currently, Congress members who retire with the minimum of ten years in the district shall receive fifty dollars additional terminal pay. For each unused accumulated paid time off day, up to a maximum of a hundred and twenty-five paid time off days. Okay, prorated for fractional days. This totals six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Why was a former retiree paid sixty-one thousand dollars? Instead of sixty-two thou, six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars resulting in an overpayment of fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Can I respond?
Not yet.
Okay.
Board Member McNeil. You were president at that time. Could you explain?
Yes. Are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
In September twenty twenty-one, previous executive administration had a closed-door meeting with the seven board that, on, at that time. And during that particular time, after we, uh, the president was Karen McIntosh. It was voted and found out that that particular person should be paid whatever it was during that time, twenty twenty-one. Twenty-two and twenty-two came around, the person, due to harassment and whatever, took out the retirement. It was sent to HR. HR does, the board has absolutely nothing to do with payout. That's not our road. The board just voted to pay the person. At that time, it was a hundred dollars per day based on the legal opinion we had and whatever it was. It was three, it was a spreadsheet that came out. And you're questioning me, but we had to have our seven board members because it was a vote. So when the three payment came out, A, B, and C. The superintendent was, the board do not get involved. The board superintendent meets with that individual. And they have a discussion which one is what. I believe C was the sixty-one. My understanding that if, if she took C, they owed her more than that. That was an agreement between her and Mr. Jones. When it came before the board, the board as a whole, they agreed to the sixty-one, I assume him and her, because the board can't get involved in that. When it came before the board, as the president, we took the vote. Wait, you asked me, we took the vote.
Point of information. Point of information. Point of information.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Are you aware that I'm getting this information from the audit that's online?
I don't, yeah, go ahead.
That's visible to the public. And I'm sure the public hasn't had enough time or had the opportunity to go through this audit. So I'll highlight the part in which I'm referencing to.
Okay.
This says, non-union employee payouts.
Okay.
During the audit, we found an instance where unused paid time off time was said to, was, was paid out to a non-union employee upon termination of employment. At a rate significantly higher than past practice for union employees of the district. While we would like to note that this payout was individually approved by the board. Individually improved by the board. We would like to recommend that the board develop a policy of how unused paid time off time should be paid out upon termination of, of employment of non-union employees. So that no unintentional, unintentional precedents are set. With that being said. I was not here at that time.
I was, and I was just accused of paying someone out. And I don't care at this point how this goes.
Thank you.
This board voted.
Yes.
No, Ms. Joyce? It's not a yes to that because this got on the board, this was not on an agenda. It came at the end and it was in your script. I knew nothing about it. And it was voted on by this board. And to hear that Mr. Jones made a decision to pay somebody I told no to? I told her no, and I told her she has to go and talk to HR, but she went and asserted my authority and came to you.
No.
It was in your script, you had someone on this board decide to make that motion. I didn't make that motion. I wouldn't have never asked this board to pay out that kind of money to any, we didn't even know how much it was the day you voted. No one knew, and there was no A, B, or C. So to hear that there was a A, B, or C, I don't know anything about a A, B, or C. All I know is this board voted and said, pay her, her days. And she, and she asked me prior to coming to you all, and I said, no, we're not gonna pay you your days. She got to the board and the board decided to make a motion. It was not on the agenda. We can go back to the meeting and we can watch this. Because that's what happened and I left here asking that person, why would you do that after I told you that that's not something we're supposed, we're not supposed to do this this way until we do our due diligence and speak to the business office and HR? She asserted my authority and went over me to a board member, and that's how that came, and it was on a script. That it was not on my script. It was on a script. And you all voted as a board. So I'm hurt that somebody would say that I would do that. Yes, I am, because we all know that this board voted to do that. Mr. Jones did not decide to pay anyone sixty-one thousand dollars for anything.
Point of information, let me.
That is not true.
Point of information.
What's your point?
I'm gonna make a point and I'm gonna respond to Mr. Jones.
Point of information.
Okay, then restrictors, I'm going to respond. I'm not gonna do a point of information because you put me on the spot as the president. I have a spreadsheet. Mr. Jones signed off on six-ten board approval. When we voted for that money to come through, Mr. Jones and I, this is a meeting, he, we gave him the spreadsheet, A, B, or C. The previous HR person said they probably not gonna do A, maybe B or C, but we know that it could have been B. When I got the approval and got it, I have it in the spreadsheet with his sign-off board. I bring it before the board. And the board as a whole vote on it. You cannot say that the president, uh, was something, um, the president role, only role is the president. No, let, let me tell you what my role was.
Point of information. Who put it on the agenda?
I don't, we have to go back and look because.
There's only two people that can put it on the agenda.
No, no, that's not true. Listen to me as I explain this. This had been, point of information for you. You ask who put it on the agenda. I'm telling you, I have the slightest idea who put that on the agenda, cause I can't go back that far. We'll have to go back and look at the minutes.
Point of information.
Let us go back and look at Zoom.
Point of information. I've done so. I've done so. Point of information. Is it your suggestion that it just mysteriously ended up on an agenda for?
No, you're, you're trying to put it, I'm telling you, no, no.
I just asked a question.
Come, go ahead. This, can we? This has, uh, at least two individuals with, uh, uh, what do we, employment complaints that have potential for litigation? It does, it does, it's two individuals.
Yes, it is.
And I can't say them by name because we can't, you're, you're shaking your head. You would have no idea what I'm even talking about.
I'm glad you said that.
No, so we have two individuals.
Point of order, point of order, point of order, point of order. I'm glad that you said that. I'd have no idea. But, I, I, I'm not done. Attorney Lee, could you come up here, please?
I'm still in my point of information.
You're right, she's on her way.
So because we have, because we have two individuals who filed complaints that are potentially labor complaints, wouldn't this be better in a closed meeting so that the new board members can get all of the documentation?
No, ma'am.
The information?
No, ma'am, it would not be better in a closed session.
All right, than an open session, but we have to.
Uh, 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 this is public information. It's on the website. Anybody can say.
Point of information, but it involves individuals' employment records and names and litigation that's.
I didn't mention anyone's name. I didn't say anyone, I couldn't, anything that could be recognized.
But in order to talk about it, we, we have to like discuss names. We're discussing people by identifying information. Everyone knows who we're talking about though. And it involves, it involves employment considerations and this could potentially be illegal. This could potentially be litigious.
Of course. That's why we're gonna discuss policy so it won't happen again. Attorney Lee, what can you tell us about this incident, if anything, and how we can adopt policy to move forward so this won't happen again?
Uh, good, good afternoon, uh, good evening, board. Um, we already have a policy about the payouts. I mean, it says clearly in the Congress contract that, you know, when someone retires after ten years, um, they can get up to six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes.
So what happened here, um, is that the board bypassed that and that has, that can have serious consequences.
Like?
Like everyone else expecting the same treatment.
The sixty-one thousand dollar payout treatment?
Which, which we obviously cannot afford.
Cannot afford. Okay, um, okay, so what's your point?
Where is the Trune legal opinion that we based our decisions on? I don't understand why this attorney, who doesn't really, who has a conflict of interest with, with a former board member.
Uh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me. Every time I come up here, you begin to slander me.
I have the floor, I have the floor.
You're out of order.
You begin to slander me.
You're out of order.
She interrupted. She's out of order. I have the floor.
Point of information.
Where is the Trune legal opinion?
Why do I need a legal opinion?
Because that's the information.
I'm asking questions, ma'am. If, I'm, you were here, I was gonna ask you next. You were the treasurer at the time. How did, how did, how did sixty-one thousand dollars walk out the door? You were the treasurer of this board.
I am trying to answer that question and you are.
Well, get on with it. Answer the question. It's real simple. How did sixty-one thousand dollars come out of this board? This decision was made by the board. It was voted upon by the board.
You're out of order. I have the floor, let me answer.
The president and the treasurer are sitting here right now. Answer the question.
Let me answer the question and quit interrupting me. You're out of order.
Answer the question.
So the answer is that we voted to have this employee compensated fairly according to the law. We didn't vote on any monetary amount. We had no idea what the monetary amount would be. And there was a Trune legal opinion, so there's another, we have our legal opinion that there's other information that this board does not have access to right now. It also involves two former employees who had complaints against the administration. So this is, I'm not quite sure what can be said out loud and what can't be said out loud because of, because of labor complaints. But two previous board members had, or board members, uh, employees of the district had complaints that were never addressed and never, uh, went through the proper, uh, policies or the legal channels. And we could be in a big heap of trouble with that. And so what I am saying is that the board, given the information that we had at the time, we voted for the one employee to get compensated for what she was owed and what she deserved. But without knowing the, the, the specific, specificities of it.
Vice President King.
So this, the sixty-one thousand dollars came out from the, from the administration. That wasn't, that was not.
How many other employees? Wait a minute, so is it your, is it point of information? Is it your statement on the record in front of those present and those that are watching online? That this, that this, uh, recommendation that was given by, what is it? Uh, what's the name of our audit firm? Stevenson, by Stevenson. Yeah, this is the audit here.
This is by Trune.
No, 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 no. No, ma'am.
You're getting the wrong one.
No, I am looking at the audit by Stevenson. The audit, not a legal opinion, an audit. So the audit says, while we would like to note that this payout was individually voted upon by the board, it doesn't say administration anywhere. Uh, Ms. Galloway.
Point of information, point of information.
Yes, ma'am.
So yes, we did, the board did vote to approve the payout. That is correct because that's how it works. That's how the process works.
So how does the administration have anything, what if they have anything to do with it?
So that's how the process worked. The board approved the payout for what this individual was entitled to. We did not have the specifics of what exactly the individual's entitled to, but we said that she deserved what was fair and what was right. That's what we voted on and that's what we agreed to. And I think anybody here would, and I stand by that decision. We didn't know that it was, we, we went by Trune's, do you have Trune's legal decision? So you don't. Okay, so I mean, that's why I'm suggesting that we.
Yes, sir.
She just had a point of information. You, you just gave Ms. Galloway the floor. She's in a point of information. She don't have the floor.
Okay, I withdraw.
Okay, Ms. Galloway.
Yes, sir.
Would you like to shed any light on this situation?
So.
Not if it's going to cause her.
Okay.
Cause she wasn't here. No, not if it's going to cause her to start to be ostracized.
And harassed.
And harassed after this, after our statements. It should not be that because we don't go a particular way, whether it's this way or that way, then we ostracize by our statements. It, and it's, and it's our truth. And it's the truth. So I'm, I'm, I'm putting that on the floor as well because it, I've been here so many times with these things and it always end up coming back to a place where we have to tell you what we already all know. And so then it becomes about the administration rather than what's really on the record is a vote. So it's, when she answers, I'm hoping that the board will allow her to answer because you asked her to. And not hold against her the truth of the matter. That's, I, I want that on the record.
Yes, sir. Duly noted. Ms. Galloway.
A payout of any kind when someone retires doesn't come to the board. This was an action that was written on a script and specifically was made for daily rate. Which is not according to the policy or the procedure or the process. They knew the specific, they had the specific amount of days and they specifically voted for it to be paid at the daily rate. So there was no movement of the administration to do anything outside of what the board voted. We did not have any power or authority to not operate under the board's vote. They voted specific for the amount of days, which was in excess to the policy. And they voted specifically at daily rate, which is, which was in excess to the policy. The policy doesn't call for the daily rate to be paid and it doesn't call for more than a hundred and twenty-five days to be paid. And even when we pay out retirees, that does not come to the board. And so for there to be an action made, the administration, anyone in the administration or central office, payroll, business office doesn't have the authority to say, the board voted, we don't, we're not doing it. They voted specifically for the amount each day and how much she was to be paid for each day at her daily rate. So if her salary is amount, you take it and you divide it by the amount of days that she worked and she got whatever she would have made for every day for a hundred and seventy some odd days.
Okay. Okay, so.
Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we're having this conversation, when I was the president, I had no conversation with Ms. Galloway as it relates to that employee she's talking about. At that particular time, the HR person was, uh, Ms. Georgina. Ms. Georgina processed that whole paperwork. She presented it to the board, looked at it, we looked at it. I had a meeting with Mr. Jones, uh, we discussed it. I believe that the administrat, executive, executive administration was in that meeting. And we discussed those three items that Georgina, and I would send it to the board tomorrow, what was in that package. And when and how it was approved. You would get that package, cause you, I don't have, I had. You would get that package because I don't have, I had it here. Ms. Galloway had zero input in this particular thing face to face with this Board. You was, I don't even believe that you was really on board. My understanding, when Georgina came back off of her medic to help, help do the, some type of report that she was asked to do this report, Board does not get involved in it whatsoever. None whatsoever. We don't even know what the price is. I'm giving you what was given to that Board at the particular time when the Board had the meeting. I, I received, I saw it in an email that was out to a previous Board member and that Board member contacted me and showed me that this is what you guys are paying Monica. I have absolutely nothing to do with it. My job is to bring it before the Board. This and it has on there, Mr. Jones's signature and it was approved. I'm going to send you these things on it. And we took the vote. The Board has no, what today's market is or what, what. At any point, when that document, before it came to the Board, it was in the administration. At any point that that check was made, it wasn't even processed. It was on spreadsheet, three different payments that that particular person had an option to. And it was up to her and her superintendent to make that decision and agree upon that price. The Board had absolutely nothing to do with it. When I got a hold to it, I presented to the Board.
Point of information.
Wait a minute, let me speak. You're letting everybody tell it.
Yeah, I let you speak and I have a question about what you spoke.
Your question?
So, is it your sworn statement and on the record in front of these people that are here present and that are watching online that this recommendation by Stevenson, by, by our audit firm, that this is not true?
I'm gonna answer that. That is the auditor. When the auditor came in and they looked at that, that's the finding that they found based on the decision that we made. So, if the auditor's saying, okay, we looked at this here, you guys need to do a, and administration need to do a better job at paying out money because the Board can't make that decision. So, this is an audit to find it after they audited. And these are their findings. Then we also got a finding, I believe, that one person, you got, you only worked three days, but you got paid for two weeks. So, that's a fifteen thou, but you're gonna see some findings. Does that mean that the Board is responsible? That is a finding that the administration have to address. When they bring something to the Board on this particular, we had a legal opinion from Trump. From Trump. We did not use Ms. Lee. It was a legal opinion from Trump based on that legal opinion. And I can bring you those legal opinion from Trump.
Okay, I'd like to see those, but.
And you would get them. And I have sent them.
Vice President King.
I would just ask, after Ms. Attorney Lee goes, could I go?
Yes.
I just got a couple of questions for me to wrap this up.
Yes, Attorney Lee.
And she was not Congress either. Ms., Ms., Ms.
I just wanted to clarify that this, I just looked back at my email. This action took place on six fifteen twenty-two. So, I don't know how far we can go back. Do we have the video for that timeframe? Now, the, the previous Board President, Carol McIntosh, after this vote happened, I don't believe she was present that day for the vote. She did reach out to me and did ask me to look into it because she felt that there had been some type of criminal activity. And she reached out to me and asked me to see if I could find any minutes or notes of it. Nothing was available. And still to this day, I, I don't, there are no minutes that reflect this action. I can't find the video. So, if we have the video, we should look for that. And the, the only thing Ms. Galloway did provide, the actual notice of payout where Mr. Jones wrote on there, based on Board action. And, and I will just say, the reason Ms. McIntosh, or previous Board President McIntosh shared that she believed there was some criminal action afoot allegedly, really was because there was no representation of minutes or video or the script that was read or anything like that. And it's very unusual to have a bypass of policy earlier today. Superintendent Jones spoke to the fact that he had denied this request. Then somehow it comes before the Board and I'm, we are not sure how it got on the agenda. And then now you have the action of the payout. And meetings later, previous trustee Pastor Gilbert specifically stated that he felt tricked about this situation.
I remember that.
And then there was a removal of members from their positions. So, I just wanted to bring us together in that the Board did, the previous Board did have some concerns about this. And the previous Board President asked me for a legal opinion about how to handle this matter. And based on the fact that we couldn't find any information, she requested that it be, she requested that it be turned over to the police. And I had, I didn't have anything to turn over to the police because there was no record of the action.
Okay. Real quick before you, as soon as I get done. So, same page, I believe it's page eighty-eight, the last page that's in the audit. It specifically has a recommendation and a section that's titled Board Minutes. And it reads as follows, keeping accurate Board minutes, meeting minutes is important as it serves as the official and legal record of the decisions and actions taken by the Board. During the audit, the school district had a very difficult time locating all of the Board meeting minutes and was unable to locate some minutes at all. The State of Michigan's Open Meetings Act, Act two six seven of nineteen seventy-six requires that approved meeting minutes have, must be available to the public within five days after the public bodies approval. There are no minutes.
May I respond to that?
Um, Vice President King had next.
I, I, I would ask that, I'm asking my questions. I hope, hope my colleagues don't interrupt me with point of information. I just, I just wanna ask my questions for my, my clarity purpose. Ms. Galloway, what were you, um, what was your first day? Do you remember like, you know, the month?
February.
February of.
Maybe the twenty-sixth, maybe the twenty-eighth.
Of two thousand twenty-two or twenty-one?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-two. Okay. Attorney Lee, do you have the legal opinion that you gave, that you just said you had, gave about that issue?
Uh, you mean the emails between me and the Board President at the time?
Yeah.
So, I didn't give a legal, I wasn't asked about the actual transaction. It was after the fact. The Board President emailed me, she forwarded me the payment information and I was, and she called me on the phone. Then I responded to her based on, you know, what I thought. We should look into it or at least, because you can't just say that something's, you know, an illegal action.
I get that.
You need to look into it. So, it was, and let me be clear, it was not reported to the police because there was nothing to, there was no video, there was no minutes. But even, even that was strange considering our legal responsibility to keep those minutes and video.
Okay, Ms. Galloway, I, I got a couple more. I just wanna make sure I'm wrapping this around my mind. Ms. Galloway, did you, so as a non-union employee, which we talked about in the HR Subcommittee.
We did.
And, and, and we know there's ambiguity and, and lack of guidance and sick, and sick and payout. There's been a precedent that they, that non-union employees follow Congress, right? So, if they follow Congress and Congress contracts says sixty-one, sixty, how much, six thousand two hundred?
I would have to decide the con.
About six two fifty rounds, but six two, sixty-two.
There's fifty dollars up to one hundred and twenty-five days.
And non-union employees is professional technicals, which, the form, which our executive administrate, uh.
Not executives, oh, executive assistants.
Assistant. The executive assistant is a part of that professional technical category, which is a non-union employee.
Correct.
And non-union employees follow Congress and Congress states that six hun, six thousand two hundred fifty is the max. Basically, they can get paid out. And Board don't get involved in payouts, right, Attorney Lee?
Correct. It's a matter when a person, so in this case, a person chooses to retire, it's a part of their offboarding.
Okay. So, Board does not have no business with that. So, if.
There wouldn't have been a reason to bring that before the Board.
So, back to the audit that does, and that's specified in there, it said that the Board need to adopt policy on that specific sick, sick and leave payout, right, Mr. President, at the end of that thing?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's already a policy afoot. I mean, at least in the, the Congress policy, it's already a policy.
So, there is still ambiguity. And, and what rules do non-union employees follow? We talked about this in HR Subcommittee, that non-union employees do not have really guidance and rules per se. So, the, the idea was to create a non-union employee handbook to address certain issues, which, I mean, this Board is, I mean, supposed to focus on policy. And I think hearing this tonight, policy need to be hurry up and made because this can't continue to happen. I, I'm, I'm appalled. So, the max was sixty-two fifty and we put another, we moved a comma to another spot.
Times a hundred.
Time, times a hundred.
And I just wanna comment, I did, I mean, so we've established that it was an overpayment. So, I did, at, at least to my, to my knowledge, that it, it should not have been paid, right? Even though the Board approved it, it wasn't per what should have been approved. So, I did, you know, the Board President did talk about it and talk about, you know, some sort of recruitment, but there was, nothing ever happened with it.
All right, final. Okay, Ms. Galloway, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to respond to statements that were made in reference to the previous HR manager. The previous HR manager was off when I arrived. She returned in June. And I specifically assigned her to a state report and to complete that report. It would, even if I hadn't assigned her to that project, it wouldn't have been in her list of responsibilities to complete the payout, to complete that sheet. So, if she did complete that and send that.
Can I interrupt one second? I want you to pause because that person's not here.
She's not, but I'm just speaking to the assignment in my integrity because my integrity was in question.
Okay, I just wanted to just say that.
I, I am not saying any names. I'm not speaking negatively. What I am saying, what I am saying is that that was not an assignment given by her direct supervisor. That is a job of the administrative assistant, not an HR manager. And the HR manager is responsible to do those payouts and did complete that. So, I have no knowledge of any report from the HR manager given to the then-President, Dr. McNeil.
So, to your understanding, Ms. Galloway, you didn't have no knowledge, you said you didn't have no knowledge that this is happening.
Wait, wait, no, I didn't say no knowledge. I was a president at the Board meeting.
So, I'm, I'm sorry. Let me make sure I'm specific. You had no knowledge that a package was made and sent to a Board President?
No.
And you, you arrived February twenty, like around February twenty twenty twenty-two?
Correct.
And this happened, Ms. Lee, June fifteenth. Was that the Board meeting or that's when exactly the payment was out? That was a Board vote?
Because it said, it said on the payout that June fifteenth was the current Board approval June.
I can go back and watch these meetings. Because I see it, June thirteenth, they had vacant property workshop. Was this a, Mr. Jones, do you remember if this was a cow, FBOE vacant property workshop? That was six thirteen, the day that happened or the script change?
It would have been the fifteenth. It would have been a regular Board meeting.
Oh, ain't no minutes.
The second, the third Wednesday of, right?
Oh, I see a budget, a budget, oh, budget here. And so, that might have happened then. Hmm, all right. I just got, I just wanna make sure I, would I know to go back and watch and put my dates in order.
A payout is also not made until after the last day of employment for that person.
And one no last day.
So, the last date of employment at that time would have been at the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
And so, the payout wouldn't have been until, of course, after the Board, the Board action because that was what moved the action.
Okay, Mr. President, I would tell you, my last comment on this matter right here, unless something happened that I need clarification on. I'm gonna call a governance, governance meeting. I, I hope my Board members, the Board members attend so we can address that specific policy so this don't happen again. I mean, this is policy that, that need to be explained the right way, not, non-unions following Congress. And we need to get exact right what is supposed to happen because this, this is, I'm not gonna say that. But this is a problem. And I think the Board need to address that through policy, which are what we need to do. So, thanks, Mr. President.
Okay. One second, ma'am. I think that with the answers that I've received, I'm, I'm gonna seek a motion and support to launch an investigation into the violation of these policies that have been violated in order to get these, to put policy in place or to make sure that this never happens again. So, I seek a motion and support to launch an investigation into this act and all policies.
Point of information?
Yes.
Who, who are we investigating? Are we hiring someone, is someone else gonna investigate? Are we doing the investigative? It's not sure.
I'm sure we already have an investigative.
Okay.
Contract with one of our law firms.
Point.
Yes, sir.
Point of information.
If we launched, how much was it? So, this would be, so you made, you made a statement that a law firm, one of our lawyers has an investigative portion in the contract. So, that won't cost us that much, right? Or that's, they're still able to bill for, bill for?
No, it's already in the, in the contract. We've already had a contract, yes.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, and I need help, you are. Is this the same audit that I asked Dr. Wolf? How was it? Is this the audit that was just on the, this audit just happened in twenty twenty-two, correct?
I think it made, it was made available in October. It happened in June, I believe, and it was made available in October.
So, what audit was Dr. Wolf talking about when it was recommendations? Are those recommendations you're reading?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, how was, I guess my concern is she labeled the audit as wonderful.
She said that there were no findings, but there were recommendations.
But she labeled it wonderful. That's concerning to me because that's not wonderful. And I guess for me, to have what happened to me tonight in speaking with Dr. Wolf is concerning. So, my question is, when are non-renewals due? Who can answer that? Oh, Ms. Galloway. When are those due?
Non-renewals have to be submitted by the end of this month. So, you have to give notice to the employee by the end of this month that they are being considered for non-renewal. And you have to list the reason why. One of those three that we spoke about at HR Subcommittee.
Very good. Thank you. No further questions.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Ms. Galloway, I wanna go back to. Mr. President to Ms. Galloway.
For support.
Oh, we, are we in a motion, right? Oh, he's in a motion.
I'm seeking a motion.
On who? On the Board, on, on Ms.
Oh, I make a motion to do the investigation. I motion to do the investigation.
Yeah.
All right.
This is great.
Is there any discussion on?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
This is gonna be good.
I wanna say this correctly, but we have five new Board members on this course. I'm speaking to the new ones. Oh, sorry. We have, we have five new members on this Board. And I really believe that there's been a mandate for better behavior and change. Two of our, our two senior colleagues were not on the ballot. I believe if they were, they would, they'd have been voted out. They're the constant on this Board when it comes to these decisions and behaviors. And to be quite frankly, probably the reason we're still here because of issues like this. So, I just hope the public recognizes that the things that most of us choose to focus on are student-driven and forward-thinking and not the stuff they do on, on a regular basis. And people with, people with eyes and ears can see our different concerns. My colleague to my left, she, she's passionate about the district and the students and empowering teachers. And we may not see eye to eye to achieve that, but I don't doubt her commitment to the success of our students. The other two I do. And every meeting that's public, we see it time and time again. And it's frustrating. I mean, it's, it's disgusting. And I really hope that nothing illegal occurred under her watch as Board, as Board President last year. But I would just say to the public, you can foil emails. I mean, there has to be some paper trail. My emails, besides a few typos here and there, look them up, foil them. I don't care. I'm very transparent in my emails. There's a reason there's been accusations made against her. So, please. There's a reason there's been accusations made against her. So please understand that this board, it's my deep belief that we're focused on student achievements, not her mess over here. Thank you.
Mr. President, I appreciate all your comments that you said, and I want to address a couple of things. When you said there was no minutes of the meetings, when Ms., uh, the previous executive administration left, she wanted to come back and finish the meetings, they, uh, to get the meetings updated. My understanding, go back and look at your board meetings, that they, uh, a lot of time, they don't just do those meetings exactly the next day.
Point of information.
You, you want me to?
I do, but I want, I do, but I just, I just, I just got to do it.
But, um, here, point of information.
Point of information.
I, I'm.
Point of information, I ain't even saying nothing yet.
Take my voice.
Okay. Are you aware that these meetings are online? That, that we can watch them?
Yeah, I'm not saying that. You asked me when the audit just said that there was no written meetings from June, I believe from June through July. And it was in the meeting on the Zoom, why those meetings, those minutes was not documented? Go back to your June Zoom meeting and you'll see that those previous board member voted that Ms. Elston does not come back and do those meetings. So those meetings did not get taken down and, and written, but they are on Zoom. The second thing that you talked about, because I'm defending myself as you ask about these here. HR, which is the previous HR person that wasn't here, she came back from her medical to do a report for the state because this particular HR person here was not able to do it. And Ms., the person.
Excuse me, Ms. Galloway?
Listen, can I finish? You guys got to, you guys sit here and let everybody do what they wanted to say.
We're just trying to be respectful.
Thank you. So that person is not here to defend herself. She has the documentation. She sent them to me in a folder. I have everything that's happened. If that person was not supposed to have been doing that, she presented that and she has integrity. And for you to sit over there and say that these two board members just do this and do that, I have a right to defend my character. You don't have a right to speak in the third person concerning me, period. However, those documents that you saw that came to the board, we could have gotten them without that previous HR who has integrity, is not going to lie. Presented it, worked on it, worked with Galloway with it and Mr. Jones, and they presented it. And was in a meeting. He had the sheet, he had the paper and presented it. And that HR person said them two people would get together and make an agreement. When I got it, it shows that sixty-one thousand. I managed to bring it as a president to the board. My direction came from the board. September twentieth, twenty-one, Karen McIntyre was the president, we voted. Ma, Mrs. Elston had a closed-door meeting by discrimination, harassment against some of the same people just sitting here. And we had that meeting in a closed door and voted to pay Ms. Elston whatever it was. In order to get the whole truth, because that person never did present a document, that ex-HR person presented those payments. The board makes no decision on its own. If you present me something, did Ms. Elston see this? Yes. And after we even voted on it, you didn't mail the check until four or five days later. If you had that check in your possession, you felt like it was wrong, because you said it was going to be EFT, but she said it came in a check. You had that check in your possession all that time. If you knew that that was a wrong check, why did you mail it? Why did you mail it? It was a check that gets folded, put it in an envelope after we voted it. The person didn't get the check for four or five days, and then she would get the check and bring you your keys. If you had all that time and you knew that check was wrong, you had the opportunity as the head of this district and your department to hold that check back and have a meeting and said that this is the wrong amount that I presented. This president don't present nothing. I presented what was approved with their name on it. How much that person going to get presented to the board? You could have said yay, nay, or no. Four board members was not voted, yes. Now, this retaliation because of their recon investigation and you getting all upset about it, it proven that it was an extortion case, you was involved in it. It's in there, your recon, look it up. You pulling up everything up, pull up recon and see why you got this here. Stop putting this mess on Georgina. Georgina did what she was supposed to do. She brought us a document. I rest my case. I move that we have a good investigation. Bring it on so we can get these lies out. Bring it on, bring on the investigation. I make, I support it. Bring it on.
Thank you, Attorney Lee.
Listening, I come up here.
Yes, ma'am.
I come up here and.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway.
I do my best to listen to all of this slander y'all put on my name. Now, I know you know that when I first was hired here, that when I was presenting my credentials to you, uh, um.
Beautiful person when you first came.
To, and I think you guys are the only two board members that were here. But I told you that, you know, I graduated from law school with honors and that, you know, I worked for Fortune Fifty Company and, you know, that I've had, you know, quite a robust legal career. So please do understand that I know the rules and the law of slander. And that every time you mention my name and you lie on me, I just add it to the list. I do not want to, you know, have to take legal action against any individual board member. It's unnecessary. I come here to help the district and I believe that my track record shows that. Now, earlier today, I sat in that audience and I listened to you talk about how you didn't want people to slander your name, how you didn't want people to talk about you and lie on you without evidence. Please give me the same grace. Now, this is the last time that I'm going to tell you that, anybody else on this board, because the next time I will file it in the courts.
Point of information, we will send the recon to you what they found.
Uh, all right.
You have a blessed day.
You have more than that.
All right. Is there any more discussion? I have discussion. So I am appalled at the behavior at, at this table.
Not at the table.
I am, I, I, I'm speaking. I'm speaking. I'm appalled at the behavior at the table at the moment. But this has been done for a long time. Mr. President, I, I'm going to support this, I'm, I'm still speaking. I'm going to support this investigation because I'm, I'm kind of curious at the moment.
Yes.
Because what I see, even going back to the audit, if the auditor policy was that the max was six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And we gave sixty-plus thousand dollars to employee. That's concerning to me. I mean, I hear all the talk about, you know, cutting this, cutting that, top heavy this, this X, Y, and Z, give it, this right here, I mean, I'm curious about this. So I'm going to support this investigation.
I do too.
But, so I'm still talking. I've been quiet over here, not interrupting no one, trying to understand what happened in the past that I wasn't here for. I'm going to go do my homework. However, what, what I don't want to happen, what I, what I kind of foresee, but I'm going to put it on the record anyway. This is going to be a hot topic that people going to try to bring up at every board meeting, because they may disagree or agree. I would encourage my colleagues, you refer policy back to governance where policy is supposed to be created at. To fix this one, you let the investigation go. We have a closed session on that investigation, understanding what that going to look like. But keep these students first. This is, this is board issues. I, I said it there today. I mean, I had confidence that, you know, people would, you know, be respectful, professional, be a leader. I had confidence. I, I'm, I'm, it's dwindling. So when we get to the table, when we have cows, special meetings to learn, listen, perform for students and, and create transformational change, let's focus on that when we have the board table, not, well, we have an issue with what happened tonight. I'm appalled, but however, I would not make this to a whole, whole thing that I can't support student work. Because this time right here, shoot, we could have been talking about extra funds. I ain't, I, I mean, this could have been a great transformational time that we allow our community, our district, our district leaders that's hoping for leadership from this board, that's at the top of organizational chart, that's been lacking. We could have did that, but I, this is a lot of information, Mr. President, so I'm going to support this.
Yes.
And I'm curious to see what it is, but however, this would not stop my work for students. This would not stop my work to train, cha, change the district and move it forward. Won't stop my work for that. But I hope my colleagues agree with me and, 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 you know, vote accordingly and also, you know, move accordingly as it go to handling the business of the district. But don't hold this district up because you may disagree with something. That's it for me.
That's true.
Thank you.
Okay. Trustee McIntyre.
So, wow, okay. Well, I feel like. You know, again, we're supposed to, I mean, talk about appalling behavior from board members, um, to have, to be blindsided and railroaded. Uh, that's one of the things that M A S B talks about, isn't like no surprises. So to have the, the president of the board kind of railroaded us into this discussion is, is kind of, that's what I find alarming and disturbing. And I do agree with the Vice President, uh, King, that we do need to have a deep dive into governance policy. Um, and in terms of what we're discussing right now, in addition to the surface level accusations that are being bandied about unsubstantiated, that are, as far as I can tell, stemming from vague Facebook allegations, which is another disturbing precedent on this board, that we need to look at the hostile work environment. Excuse me? Have the floor, are you doing something? Thank you. So there have been, there are two previous hostile work environment complaints from the two individuals who we've been discussing, um, including FMLA and labor violations. Um, these, and a lot of things were discussed in closed-door meetings. And so would you please stop interrupting me and let me have the floor? Um, these need to be brought forward to our new board members because there's a lot of information that they're lacking and they're receiving, um, bits and, yeah, vague information from people who were not in meetings, were not on the board, um, you know, that, through social media, that it is very unprofessional. Um, so there are two hostile work environment complaints, um, that are still unresolved from two individuals that we just discussed, the former, uh, HR, uh, temporary director. She wasn't the manager. She was the, um, what was it, the? The interim assistant director. There were also FMLA violations and labor violations. So when we do this investigation, I fully support, um, an investigation into this. In fact, I welcome it because it needs to happen, given all of the misinformation and the lies and the falsehoods that are being spread. But these things, we need to look at the, the recon investigation, uh, report. We need to look at the true legal opinions. Um, uh, we need to look at the individual who received this so-called pay, payout.
Point of information, can we stay germane to the subject?
I, I'm totally germane to the subject.
Mr. President, I call the question.
Yes, thank you. Yes, can we, can we please call for the question?
Oh, support.
Okay, thank you.
So, okay, so everyone else gets to talk.
You're out of order. Secretary, uh, Perkins.
He's asking to call the question.
Yeah.
You guys, come on, come on, you guys.
Um, Trustee McNeil, McIntyre.
No.
Trust, Trustee McNeil. It's okay, it's okay. Um.
Yes.
Trustee Rellifer.
Yes.
Vice President King.
Yes.
Myself, President Clack, I vote yes, so it passes.
All right, now it's time to vote.
Now it's time to vote.
Mr. President, could you restate the motion, please?
The, for the, um.
Investigation.
The, 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 for the, uh, investigation?
Yes.
Yes, so, all right, Secretary Perkins.
Yes.
Uh, Trustee McIntyre.
Yes.
Um, Trustee McNeil.
Yes.
Treasurer Luna.
Yes.
Trustee Rellifer.
Yes.
Vice President King.
Yes.
Myself, President Clack, I vote yes.
I make a motion to adjourn, President.
Second.
Okay.
That's not debatable.
All right. Let's go. Um, Secretary Perkins.
Yes.
Yes, she, she made a motion, he made a motion.
Trustee Dr. Joyce. Uh, Treasurer Luna.
Yes.
Tre, uh, Trustee Mac, um, Rellifer, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Yes.
Um, Vice President King.
Yes.
Myself, President Clack, let's go. Yes, thank you.
Ten oh three.
Media adjourned at ten oh three.